County Council, if you'd like to make a word, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everybody. This is the regular scheduling for June 6, 2016. We'll be going to roll call members, please.
Member Borat.
Here.
Member Rethen.
Here.
Member Jeffrey.
Here.
Member Clumman.
Here.
Member Finney.
Here.
Member Sauerman.
Here.
Member Draper.
Here.
Member Ryan.
President. So we have a full quorum tonight, seven members. The first thing in the agenda for council action is approval of the minutes that were placed in the previous meeting. There was an executive and regular scheduled meeting on May 2nd. What is the council's pleasure?
So we'll approve both.
We have a motion to approve both. We have a second.
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Corrections, deletions, or additions to both those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by an eye.
Aye.
Yes, the ayes have it. The council. What do they read in the agenda? Any additional items to the agenda? I do want to bring up one item here, though. You were given, it's item number three on new business, petition number 16-21. That's actually going to be listed as ordinance number 2016-0609 for the record. The council has given a sub-sheet in front of you here. It's been legally advertised correctly. It's just the document that we have in front of you goes with the petition for the land use. So, additional items, just a clarification, item number three. Was there any other items that needed to come from the council tonight that's not listed? Okay. We'll do have, we'll have approval claims, we'll have petition remonstrations and public statements, we'll have special recognition by the mayor's office. Report to any department heads, boards, or committees. There are no appointments tonight, no presentation, no unfinished business, no deferred. But we do have a couple items in the old business of ordinance 2016-0403, ordinance for the flood hazard areas for the city of Crown Point. This is the second reading as required. Number two, we have public hearing ordinance 2016-0506 and ordinance amending Article 5 Public Works to City of Crown Point. Second reading is required. And that's the wheel tax. So if anybody's looking to speak on that topic, that's the appropriate time, if you want to have, to be a public hearing at that time to specifically talk about that topic. No need to do it under petition remonstrations and public statements because you'll have your chance. Okay? Under our new business, we have Resolution 2016-0608R, Resolution approving the deduction from assessed valuation of structures in an economic revitalization area in Crown East warehouses. This is located at 555 East 110th Street, and it's Ronald Morris owner. Number two, Resolution 2016-0609R, Resolution approving the deduction from assessed valuation for a structure of new manufacturing equipment in an economic revitalization area for Craig Fowler for the Angry Betty Brewing Incorporated, more commonly known as 11000 Delaware Parkway. Phil Logan is the president. Number three is ordinance 2016-0609. This is Dave Bryan, petitioner, Lake County Greenhouse Corporation. Owner is requesting a rezone from R1 Residential, single-family to B2 Business. This is more commonly known as 915 East North Street. This did receive a favorable recommendation from the planning commission. It's also commonly known as the old greenhouse. Number four, Resolution 2016-0610R, Resolution endorsing enhancement enforcement of ICE Title IX, Article 18, Chapter 2. Number five, FCC notification, Inspector Manager lease ownership disclosure information and Inspector lease agreement. Number six, Resolution 2016-0611R, Resolution adopting uniform internal control standards for the city of Crown Point. Number seven, Resolution 2016-0612R, Resolution establishing materiality threshold in adopting the principles contained in the Examiner's Directive 2015-6 as amended. Number eight, ordinance 2016-0608. It's an additional appropriation, first reading. And number nine, we'll have a discussion of establishment and the reestablishment of the Cume Development Fund, Cume Capital Improvement Fund, and Cume Fire Fund. That is our agenda for tonight. We'll go right into the approval claims. Chris?
I had a chance to review all of these claims, including all of the credit card receipts for the city. I did an audit of about 12 accounts, I believe. It all appears to, with one exception, did that get removed?
Yes.
Claim number 59467 was, they agreed to withhold that because they took full review. But apart from that, this all appears to be city business done in good faith, and I recommend that we approve these claims with the stated exception.
Again, the stated exception, that was a call allowance subpurchase that is going through the review through Chris, through the department head for clarification. We didn't have enough information from the body to talk about, so we decided to pull that from the claim to wait for the other.
So I move we approve the claims with the exception of number 59467.
We have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by an eye.
Aye.
Yes, you guys have it. Thank you, Chris. Good job. Next up, petition remonstrations and public statements. Anybody can come forward. All we do is ask you to state your full name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Chris Becker, and I live at 1080 George A. Court. I'm coming before you today regarding my disappointment with a recent decision that was made by the city. For the members of the city council that may not be aware of this decision, the city decided that they are not responsible for the maintenance of the city's stormwater management system that drains onto and through my property. The city's municipal code, Section 157, establishes the stormwater management system with the primary purpose of providing for the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city of Crown Point. Per this same section, the city's stormwater management system is defined to include drains as well as ditches, both of which are present on my property. With this decision, and by not maintaining a stormwater management system in an appropriate manner in accordance with municipal code, I believe the city is endangering the lives of my children and other children within the neighborhood. In addition, the city is creating a situation where the private property of a taxpaying citizen of the city is being destroyed by the city's stormwater management system. The significant gully and channel erosion present on my property creates a situation where a large volume and flow rate of water enough to move several tons of boulders is present during any normal summer storm for a period extending beyond the actual time of the rain. In one year since moving into my house, the ditch of the city's stormwater management system eroded a significant amount of the initial grade, and it's increasing with each rainfall. The significant erosion presents a drowning or fall hazard that needs to be addressed by the city. The city has stated that they are not culpable for the maintenance of the stormwater management system since it was present when we acquired the property. This is unreasonable, as it implies that the city is not responsible for any of its stormwater management systems subsequent to installation within any development. I find it abhorrent that the city has initially declined my request with the justification that we were warned about building on the property. In reality, we were never warned verbally or in writing about this concern. In addition, the approval of our building permit, which includes the approval of the city engineering department, proves that they must not have been too concerned. I am hoping that the mayor and the full city council will revisit this decision and provide for the safety and general welfare of its citizens by correcting and preventing the further erosion of my property. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Just to bring the council up to speed, Chris is going to be on the Board of Works agenda for this Wednesday, 2:00. Present his facts and findings to his petition. So, as not on a notice, we recommended Chris bring through Board of Works. Could have an opportunity to speak in front of that body who's in control of the utility system of the city of Crown Point. So, the petition has been heard, and the process will follow.
Can I just probably give my address?
Yes, can you give me?
Yes, my address is 1080 George A. Court. It's in Elbendale Farms subdivision.
At the conclusion of the Board of Works, we'll have myself and Councilman Clemmons, who is the representation of the council on that board, provide a full detailed report to our council president, who will share the information and the findings. Okay. To lock on Wednesday, you're right.
To lock on Wednesday, just plan to be there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else need to come forward? Once, twice, we'll close the public petition and remonstration period for tonight, for June 6. We'll go with special recognition by the mayor's office. And it's my pleasure tonight to talk about three employees, Bill Onwin, Brad Heffner, and Greg Smith. Recently, all three of these individuals have taken on a new chapter within City Crown Point and the sanitary district in the department. And they're required to obviously be in charge of testing and different forms and fashions that comply with EPA ruling and different things about water quality and sanitary of the city. The EPA revised the total chloroform rule with new testing requirements. This is a very detailed requirement, and usually takes many, many times of expertise to get this compliance, when you get these new rules through the testing process, through the lab. And with the new regulations being imposed, and again, with all the new slight inexperienced employees we had there, they were revised and submit the procedures to IDM with a limited experience and got approval on their very first level. It shows you the dedication that they had through the leadership with Chris out there, and their dedication to work beyond the hours of getting themselves prepared with all the new rules and getting themselves into compliance with the city. So we'd like to recognize them for hitting the ground running and doing a great job. So we'd like to call out Bill Onwin, Brad Heffner, and Greg Smith. Forward, please. Greg, you want to come forward, too? Maybe you can kind of give a little bit more detail that this was a huge undertaking, and it's, and again, it usually doesn't happen this quick, but I'll let you tell the story.
Most of the time with IDM, when you submit things to them, you get the response back that they need more information, more detail on different aspects of it. And these guys kind of got thrown at the last minute, and you put it together. And when I said it's approved on the first shot, it was, it was amazing. And I said, okay. So that was rare in itself to get the IDM approval that quick.
Greg? I just got the lever solved. We're not sure we're going to get anything, but we've got. Guys, anybody want to speak on behalf of the trio here?
That's a lot of work.
Well, we appreciate the dedication because it's an important asset of our infrastructure of the city of Crown Point, our water control, our sanitary, and as you see, everything is going across, everything relates to the flooding situation, stuff like that. But it's good to know to our residents and our business community that's here, our visitors, that we've got great leadership under Chris, and Scotty Rediger, and the employees that here take care and pride in the little details and the information gathering, so we can provide that quality infrastructure to our city, which provides value back to our residents and our community. So, on behalf of the city council, the residents, and the people who enjoy the utility that comes through our faucet each every day, thank you for that dedication as well. Thank you. Chris, going one way here. clerk treasurer, Chris Russell, provided everybody an update on the little bit of changes to our money markets, and so there's good information being provided here. Chrissy, you want to give any more details in the public meeting about the changes and how you're bringing more money to City Crown Point, which is good?
No, I'll just say for the record, when I came into office, I just started looking at the banks and the interest rate that the city was receiving. And I wanted to make sure that I would do my job for the city and make sure we had the best interest. We met with about five, six banks, and we went from point 10 points, point 10 points to point 55, which is a great increase on the city's finances.
Good work. I just want to thank you for bringing us our attention, and good steward of our dollars. Thank you. So I thought the council would be excited with that, right?
Absolutely.
Greg, any other news that come for the council from department heads?
No, ma'am.
All right. Again, we said we have no appointments, no presentations, no unfinished business, no deferred, and we'll go right into the old business. And the first one on the agenda tonight is the flood hazard areas. This is the ordinance 2016-0403, an ordinance for flood hazard areas in the city of Crown Point. The second reading as required. I know that this is going through its paces with the ordinance committee, got shot back up to the city council last month. And I believe if there's any other questions, Mr. Nittles, I believe you've addressed all the concerns the council has provided for you to make sure the document is in legal form?
I believe I have. I've had a chance to review now, and if it moves with the council's approval, I would recommend a motion for it to be made.
I will go with Bob, who leads the ordinance committee. Any issues with the ordinance flood hazard areas that's been presented here tonight?
No.
Now go to our council president.
I would make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
The ordinance number 2016-04. I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Member Borat.
Yes.
Member Rethen.
Yes.
Member Jeffrey.
Yes.
Member Clumman.
Yes.
Member Finney.
Yes.
Member Sauerman.
Yes.
Member Draper.
Yes.
Passes 7-0. Thank you, council. Okay. Next up is a public hearing for ordinance 2016-0506. An ordinance amending Article 5 Public Works to City of Crown Point Municipal Code. This is the second reading. And again, if we can get the lights turned on, we want to do a PowerPoint presentation. We've got Greg Garitas here as well, our financial advisor, and his team. And we want to kind of, kind of go over some details here that the council charges to do over the, I think we're going to reverse that bunch here.
One more to your left, or your right.
There you go. And we keep the lights on over here, so we can, there we go, we can see. Very good. So if anybody wants to look at the board over here as well, and I believe if you're in the audience, we did pass out, so you can also read along, because everybody got a sheet that was in the audience here. Now we'll pass them out. On one side, you have the Committee Crossing Matching Grant for the state of Indiana. And then the other side is the Asphalt Pacer Gaddick Collection Field. So as we talk about different numbers from 10 to 1, you're going to have a pretty good idea of what we're exactly talking about here. And again, we're talking about the Crown Point wheel tax and what it means to our community. And so we want to begin with the slide presentation, Dan.
Yes.
Again, our overview on this, how we got here today, House Bill 1001 and Senate Bill 67 merged together to provide municipalities an opportunity for the first time that if you didn't have a wheel tax. Again, about two-thirds of the state now currently has a wheel tax in their communities through the county adoption program. The ones that didn't finally indicated that they could do it through their own home rule in their local municipality without waiting for the county to do so. By doing so, if you did pass it, the state provided what's called a Committee Crossing Matching Grant, and you're able to take a rainy day fund, a local option income tax, or a new wheel tax. And again, the local option tax is something that has to be new and created from this point going forward, something that's not in the books. You must have an approved asset management plan with the file, on file with INDOT. And plan has to have a creative user from the Pacer system, which is the information that we're going to provide here in the back sheet. Okay, at this time, I am going to turn this over to Dan, because again, the council served us last month, as we were moving forward in the first reading and bypassing it with the 5-2 motion, to go ahead and invest and put a lot of time and effort into it. So our staff, dedicated, led by the leadership of Dan Nix here, through merits of a lot of different employees in the city of Crown Point, to take the information that we already had in place, but match it into the LTAP program, the Pacer program, so we could be eligible for going forward. And it really opened a lot of our eyes on our road system too. But I will let Dan kind of take it over here a little bit before we jump back in about what the Pacer system is and how we got to here, because Dan was the leader of creating this system. So Dan, with that, the floor is yours.
Right, thank you. Like Mayor said, my name is Dan Nix. I'm with the engineering office in the city of Crown Point here. Go back, I've been in the city for 10 years, and every year I've been involved with the paving project. This year, they came out with, we needed an asset management plan. The plan that we have adopted and created is one that LTAP has approved through INDOT, this is the system that they allow, and one that is required to be eligible for the funding. As the mayor said, there is the Pacer system which is used. It was developed by the University of Wisconsin. Multiple municipalities, counties, states, all around the country use this system because it's more uniform, everybody's on the same page. And as you guys can see from what was handed out, there's a 1 through 10 rating system, and it's pretty straightforward. If it has something that's listed in the 6, but it's not in a 5, then you're going to have a 6 for your road. There's not too much arguing about, you know, this road doesn't have this, this road has that. 10 is the best. Going down to 1 is the worst. And as we go through, we'll show you some examples of these tonight. We ended up, we broke the city up into about 950 segments. We tried to break it up into segments that we typically pave. There's usually roads run longer than that, but if you don't pave a whole two miles of the road, you might pave it from one major road to another major road. That's why we broke that up into segments, so we could have more of an estimate to figure out, you know, maybe this road from point A to point B rates out of 10, well, if you put on 100 feet, that might rate as a 2. But we're not going to pave that whole thing, so that's why we broke up into smaller segments like that. And then also, part of the plan, we had to create a five-year capital improvement plan, and that was based off of all the data that we gathered, which we'll continue to get into tonight.
Mayor, do you want to speak on the dollars?
Yeah, currently right now, actually, the financial aspect, Greg Garitas is here, and then I'm going to turn it over to Greg, if you can come up to the podium here, and you can address the council and the community here, how your dollars work here in the city of Crown Point.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Greg Garitas. I'm president of Financial Solutions Group, and we've been the financial advisor to the city for well over 20 years. I also serve as financial advisor to many counties and have enacted prior to 2016, enacting the wheel tax. And our last count in 2016, there was around 47 counties that had put it together. That's a substantial number of counties, and have had it for quite a while. Here in Crown Point, over the, as you know, with the budgets, and every time we go through budget season, it's been pretty tight. We got a little bit of breathing room when the income tax was enacted. But what we've been able to do each and every year is kind of keep our revenues where they've been, but keep looking at the expenses. And we've cut a lot of additional, a lot of the expenses, tried to keep the emphasis on many, many years on police and the fire, which was the, really, public safety seems to be the number one issue around the state of Indiana, and especially in larger municipalities. And we've been able successfully do that by putting more police officers and fire department employees on. But we don't have, as you know, every time we look at the budget, and we try and look at capital improvements, what's known as the 400ths in city budgets, we don't have a lot of money left over after you pay the, especially the largest budget, which is the police department, and then the various others. And you'll see that again when we come, talk to you about the budget for 2017. So, what we are able to do usually on an ongoing basis is at least have some money in the general fund, as you see up there, and on the motor vehicle highway fund. Now, the problem, the challenge, I guess I should say, is with this matching program, and with what you see around the state of Indiana, there's really only three ways to kind of get the dollars together for the matching program. One is, a lot of municipalities, I have some cities that have saved up and have actually been really growing a lot, and they have appealed their maximum levy, and they'll have income taxes for the last 15 years. They're able, we're able to deposit some funds in their rainy day fund, but what this one requires, first of all, we don't even have a rainy day fund here in Crown Point. We've not been able to fund it because we don't have extra money running around. And we've been actually just trying to maintain a general fund budget, and that's reasonable, and a general fund cash balance that we can fund our day-to-day operations from. So, the state said, fine, what you need to do is set up a rainy, a new rainy day fund. And as you know, we're doing that with the one-time source of revenue that we're getting. And what most, a lot of municipalities are doing around the state, they're using prior rainy day funds, or they're using the new dollars that they have, and they're going for the matching grant with that. The third source, and really the one that the state's looking at hardest, is they've said, we'll give the cities, the municipalities, the right to do a new wheel tax. And, you know, what boils down to is the same thing I've heard from them for 20 years. You know, we're going to give you a tool. If you choose not to use it, we're not always going to match you with that, because we've given you a tool and you haven't used it. So I don't care what you're talking about. When they put together a tool, they usually expect you or anticipate municipalities using it, and then they'll usually match it from there. So it is a great opportunity. And remember, the grant program is a three-year program. There is less money in second year and third year. There's a lot of competition for round one. That's why they limited it to $1 million. So I've got some counties in and around Indianapolis that have to drop in a bucket to their $200 million road program that they're trying to fund. And so, you know, the good news is that that's enough dollars that are going to go, that's going to be able to be spread. They also have said recently that it has to have a regional impact and an economic impact. And, you know, I think that's been very, very obvious here in Crown Point, because we've had some good, stable, smart growth, what I call smart economic growth. We haven't blown up like a town of Westfield, and, but we haven't been stagnant like some of the rural towns down in southern Indiana, that I wonder if they'll be around. A lot of questions come up when I've talked about the financing is, well, what about TIF? And, you know, every time we look at a wheel tax in a county, they look at their TIF first. Well, the problem, the issue here is, TIF, remember, you've got to be in or directly serving in the TIF area. And like, when I address it with counties, we've usually got some streets quite a distance away from the TIF district. And some people say, well, you know, you paved all those roads in the TIF district, why don't you pave mine? Or remember, the law doesn't allow you to take TIF dollars from Main Street and spend it all in the county, or in the corner. Okay? So, this would give you an opportunity to have additional monies for rural areas or non-economic development areas, okay, which is critical. We also looked at the sportsplex and said, okay, can we take some of, you know, we're doing quite well there, can we spend that in other corners? And again, that's being driven by a TIF district, and that's been a program that we put together many, many years and working very, very well, but that can't be used in the outlying areas. But that can't be used in the outlying areas. So it goes back to, you know, if you don't have a rainy day fund and if your only dollar is the one-time new money, you're pretty limited, especially for a pay-as-you-go. I know several years ago, probably about five to seven years ago, we put together that GL bond for roads. That worked very, very well. It was one-time, we got a low interest rate, but we did have to amortize that over the life of that road. And so, you know, once that road's done, it'll have to be redone and that bond. It made good economic sense at the time because we had some levy that we could borrow based upon, but that was before the frozen caps that we now have, the one, two, and three, and things like that. So that was good, but it doesn't work so well now when you're bumping up against the cap because you kind of steal from everybody else. But, you know, that's, that was a great opportunity and quite frankly, one that a lot of cities had to do in the past. So I guess unless we want to, I don't know if another slide, Mayor, right behind that goes to that. I guess the one key is that everybody is looking at, if they can do a two-for-one, if we can, you know, have a million dollars and get a million dollars, that that's worth, you know, really, really trying to go after. And I love that, you know, I've read three-year ordinance, I love how we have our safety nets in there. You know, I think there may have, should be some type of threshold because going back each and every year, you know, it can be, you know, a pretty lengthy process. And sometimes I've seen some ordinances say if there's $500,000 of new money or something like that, coming from a new wheel tax, everybody's, or from a new gas tax, everybody's hoping that the legislature is going to find that fix in two or three years. And I think, I've seen them saying that for now for 20 years. And, you know, it just keeps getting pushed back and back and back, so.
Greg, can you also give the council some financial advice? Because right now, Lincoln does not have a wheel tax. But if we become second position to a first position if the county passes those next year?
Boy, yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty obvious that, you know, there has, there's a lot of local municipalities that would like to have the opportunity before, like a Hendricks County or a Hancock County or somebody, Greenfield would love the opportunity to have the ability to levy a wheel tax before the county as a whole. And, you know, each one of those counties, then, you know, they've already, 47 of them already have and it's on the entire county. So the opportunity of you being able to go first is so critical because the dollar that's paid here is spent here. On the county, the dollars are collected in a hole and then they're distributed down. And seeing this work in many, many other localities, you don't get what the City of Crown Point pays in. You will actually get pretty discounted dollars once it's all said and done. So, you know, the real opportunity here, if you choose to do it, is the advantage that we will levy it here and we will use the dollars here. And I guess, you know, that to me is really, really beneficial. That you don't get someone handing you 10 cents after they've taken their 90 cents. And that's, you know, if you're going to pay into it, you want to see it spent here. You don't want to see it spent elsewhere.
Thank you, Greg.
Sure. Is there anything else, any other slides that?
We may have to get back into the.
And then Mayor, we still want to add to the agenda, I'm sorry, to get off track about the refund.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So it's back to Dan, you can.
Next, we're going to show a few samples of what some of these roads look like in the city. 10 is going to be a new construction or a newly rehabilitated road. New construction meaning Copper Creek was built, developer put in the road, they handed over to us. It's still less than one year old, that's a new construction road. We just did this project on North Street, that's a rehabilitation. So it will keep a 10 rating for one year. Once you hit the 366 days, it automatically goes down to a nine. Even if there's nothing wrong with it, it goes down to a nine. So here's two examples of a 10. Here's another project we did. This was less than a year ago on West Street, but pretty soon this summer, this road will get knocked down to a nine. Nine is light new condition. I don't have the date, we did this project on Greve View Place, building or building? Two years ago? Or last? I think it was two years ago, but this one, we didn't see anything wrong with it. When we did this project, we had to put extra drains in. You can see on the top there, the concrete is new. That was part of that project. We did this one properly, spent the extra money that we needed to because it was so far gone. Had to put the extra drains in, brought this one back up to where it needed to be. And now this is two or three years later and it's still at a nine. There's no cracks or anything in this road. An eight is very good, you'll start getting some occasional cracking. This is Crinbow Lane in Pen Oak, this is going to seven. You have your transverse cracks and also you have longitudinal cracks that are showing up in there. Six is a good, that's when you start seeing first signs of block cracking where the transverse and longitudinal cracks will join each other and meet. Five, you start getting some secondary cracks, a little bit more block cracking and a few potholes. Four, block cracking, so you can see right there it's getting a little bit bigger. This is South Bridge Street. Most people, their fives and fours, this is where they start doing their mill and pave projects. And this is where you're supposed to do your mill and pave projects because the structure of the base layer of these is still good enough that you can do a mill and pave on these and the road will be back to where it needs to be. When it starts getting down into these lower ones, like these threes, you guys I'm sure have seen these before, alligator cracks, where it looks like the scale of an alligator. When you start seeing that, that's when you start having problems with the structure of the road. You can also see some longer cracks that are running down the length of the wheel lines there. That's extra stress on the road at that point, which is pushing it down, causing some rutting in those conditions as well. Now we get into our twos and ones. A two rating, you have greater than 25% alligator cracking, more frequent potholes, extensive cracking. The patches are in poor condition. And when you get down to a one, the road has failed, loss of integrity and surface distress. And basically at that point, there's no choice to, you have to basically take your road way down to the base, put new stone, new binder, new surface. I'm going to show you a few samples of some twos and ones now. This is 99 Place up on the north end of town. You can see in the blown-out picture there, that's some of the extensive patching that we've had to do. This is Fillmore Court. You can see water sands, so the road is not, the road is, the structure of it has gone down enough where water is sitting in areas where it's not supposed to. It's supposed to be out on the curves, running down the gutter lines, getting to the storm drains. Mar Court, this one's all the way down to a one. The condition of this one, you can see the concrete there has been pushed up just from the road, trucks driving on there, cars driving on there, just pushes the concrete up through the asphalt or from the asphalt pushing over. Clark Road, you can see the amount of potholes on that road. Arthur Street, this one is a little bit darker, the tree covers, but on the right side and the left side, it's pretty much a solid patch all the way down just because of the way that the asphalt has settled so much next to the curb. And you can kind of see in the blown-up picture, you can see the shadow of the water there. That water just sits there and water standing on the road is worsening for it. Lester Drive, you can see this one also on the left side there, has water standing, extensive potholes. So the part of the project, we had to put a table together and rate all of our roads. We did that. Like I said, that was the 950 segments of roads that we had. When we ended up doing that, a 10 through six, INDOT considers as a good. Yes, your first, your 10s, 9s, 8s, you don't need much work to those, if anything at all. Your 7s and 6s, you might need some work, which would maybe be some cracks seemingly done to them. When you get into your fives and fours, that's when you need to start looking at repaving the roads on those. And then your 3s to 1, they consider those poor. When we break that down to the city, our three, our 1 through our 5 account for 62% of our roads. So right now, we should be, this year, paving 62% of our roads. And we have roughly 138 to 140 miles of roads in our town. How long would that take? That would take us 30 years. And we got to that by, I'll go back to the 30 years. We average right now roughly three miles of roads is what we can fit into our budget to pave and redo. So we took that based on how many roads we have and that's roughly 30 years to fix all those roads. The, what is, the 40% increase here, perfect example, we're working on Mar Court right now, you saw that in one of the pictures. That one, we rate that as a one. When we got into that road, we did the concrete work that we needed to, worked on the drainage in there. Once we got down to it, Bill, our engineering office, he went out and saw that it was what they barely, after they'd milled and paved.
There's about an inch and a half pavement existing right now. And the subbase, which is the soil underneath, was basically gone. So we've got to actually do this.
And the estimate to do the work that we needed to for the grind and pave portion of that, plus any concrete work on that, came in about $140,000. We thought we were good there and that was what was going to fix the road. Once we got down to what Bill was talking about there and looked at the subbase and we took out the concrete on the side and stuff, and we saw that it was basically garbage, it's going to cost us about another $55,000 to do that road. So if we would have done Mar Court five, six, seven years ago, whenever it was, in the 3, 4 range, it would have cost us less, now we're paying 40% more for that road. So if we put that into all of our roads, I believe the council, all you up there, have a copy of the 950 segments of roads. I think it's, how many pages it is, but how many roads that we have that fall into one through a 3 or one through a 4? If we have to add 40% to the cost of all of those to fix those, that's just money that we're wasting that we could have fixed that road earlier, but we didn't have the money to do it. This is where I was talking about roughly right now, we do about three miles of roads. If the wheel tax passes, we'll be eligible for additional funding from the state and our current paving fund and then the money that the wheel tax will bring in. We are targeting with our estimates that we could get roughly 10 miles of roads is what we're thinking that we can get in the future. This, we broke down all the councilman's districts. This is actually a low number. When we figured this, we just did a grind and pave cost for your roads. So when we figured that cost, that wasn't any concrete work or any drainage work or anything like that that would need done. These are the dollar amounts that it would take just to grind and pave the roads in your districts. And the money that we have earlier that Mr. Garitas talked about, the $570,000 that we have every year for paving, that means that's how much each district has per year, $114,000. This year, the top two amounts is the, you want to talk to us, Mayor, do you want me to?
Yeah, the top two amounts, the council should be aware of. What Mr. Garitas talked about before was the $300,000 we get from the general fund. $270,000 is what we get after the MBH puts it into a specific form, one-line item for road repairs. Road salt carryover from last year, we had a very, very mild winter, Scotty, and it was, we sat down and looked at that, carried money over. We said, we know we're going to have some additional funding needed for next year. This is even before the wheel tax was even an issue or an option for the City Crown Point. So we took the available $200,000 left over, carried it over and covered it through the new quarter treasure to put towards roads. So that's a new revenue source. The extra, the low-end rebate is one that Senator Niemeyer was here and talked about through the Senate Bill 67, was able to take the overages, not the overages, but the amount of local option income taxes that paid to the state and then apply that 51%. A lower than 15%, so over the last eight years, that money was collected from the City Crown Point that was given to the state of Indiana was returned back to us in a one-time shot. And Chrissy Kirkland, I believe, received that check here.
That is correct.
So we do have that. So we knew that was going down the legislation before the wheel tax was talked about. So we've dedicated that in there because that road, that money right there is for roads, up to 75% or you can put 25% of that money into a rainy day fund that you established that Greg says that we're trying to establish now. But when it comes out of the rainy day fund, it fully has to go back into road improvement. So they want that money to go back in, that's a one-time shot. So that's not an ongoing new revenue source. It is this year's revenue source to put us in at $1.5 million in roads. And as, and we're poised to move forward and do those and hit a lot of those category ones. But as you can see, when you start to pull those things up, that's going to be just a drop in the bucket, things we have to do as an ongoing process because not only do you fix roads, but you have to maintain ones that are not quite to that level yet. And so we'll go to the next slide. So then we had the opportunity, we looked at this and we were conservative about this, okay? The numbers we received from the B&amp;B, we have not been able to calculate. We told the council last year, this was our best guesstimation based on numbers came from the B&amp;B. We worked with Greg Garitas from FSG. And the number we received is in the 46307 zip code. And we all know that City Crown Point borders that 46307 zip code, kind of stretches out outside our corporate limits. So we took that number and kind of be conservative with it, took 70% of those, 70% of that number and looked at what it would do for the surtax, which are the passenger vehicles, and the wheel tax, which are for the commercial vehicles, to really give us a good estimate of what that could contain. So if the wheel tax was passed, we would be generating a little over about $1.1 million of new money that would go in and also be eligible on a three-year plan each and every year as a continued revenue source to have the ability to match the grants that are out there. Now, I'm not telling you tonight that there are applications that are guaranteed to be fulfilled, but the only chance we have to be eligible for those applications are the three sources that Mr. Garitas talked about. Was it rainy day fund that we don't have, okay? It was the wheel tax, which we're considering. And the third source, we also don't have the ability to do because it's not new money. So we could have next year alone, $2.6 million in roads in 2016 alone, or for '17. That's on top of putting the 1.5 that we just talked about this year into play. So over the next two years, we get about $5 million of money available, which is almost 10 times the amount that we have in one year. So you can start to see how we can triple down that 30-year, chisel down that 30-year mark, to get it down to something that's going to be a little more reasonable to get us in place. So the life of the road in perfect conditions, and again, we can't put into any account for weather-related issues, undermining issues with curb and concrete replacement, the watershed that goes on these roads, or any of these things that if you don't repair the complete road, that the watershed and the frost and freeze can actually impact those roads on a future basis.
And Mayor, just one other comment, that this assumes that we can maintain the $300,000 and the $270,000 on the motor vehicle.
Correct.
Each year, you know, we incur more healthcare costs. You know, it probably at this rate, it would assume a 0% increase in wages. And, you know, it's a challenge each and every year to get these dollars out of the pretty tight budget. Again, if you haven't been on your board in the last couple, just wait until we get to the 17, you're going to see.
And the other part is too, we've been very fortunate that our current vendor, Washington Kelly, has not increased their prices in the last seven years. And that is remarkable, and that's a testament because we have a good working relationship with the city and with that vendor. And by state law, we can negotiate and keep that rate as long as they keep that rate, they're allowed to be renewed. And so, and there's been discussion because we have a member on our board who works, my conquest, who works for Zinga, the price of concrete alone has gone up 25%. And we do, as you can see these streets, we show you, and you've seen we've done work each in the districts we're out there. We do complete streets, not only the rehab of the road, we do the curbs, sidewalks, aprons and things of that nature because that will buy us even longer longevity of the probability of matching that 15-year lifespan.
And see, that's what I do love about the new revenue sources. It's going to allow us to match something in the next two years when we believe, and as I stated earlier, that the price will go up a little bit, but also it will come down because there'll be less revenue available in the next two years. So you've got to look at this as a long-term program, so.
And I wanted to use an example, my first year when I was here 10 years ago, I worked on a project where we just did a mill and pave of Indian Avenue from, or I'm sorry, from 231 up to North Street. And we redid it last year. And when I went to my training classes, they said, if you do mill and paves on these roads and they're heavily traveled, if they're not done, you know, 100% how they should be done, you probably don't get 10 years out of them. And when we redid it last year, we fixed the problems with it, we added some curves, take the waterways. take the water away, we added some extra drainage to it. But we don't want to be redoing these roads every ten years, and we're just doing grind and pave them. If we're going to do them, we need to do them right, and we need this extra money to help continue to do the roads properly, and catch them before they get down to the ones and twos. As Mr. Garretas says, a hundred percent investment will stay back in Crown Point. pave more roads, safer roads, less wear on your vehicle. I'm sure there's somebody in this room that's had a hot tire from a hot, or, you know, flat tire from a pothole, or busted rim, or something like that. Twenty-five dollar wheel tax for the whole year equals about two dollars and eight cents a month.
Now, the council, I want you to also consider this as well, we're looking at three different buckets here now for roads. We currently have five hundred and seventies in place now. We're now looking to discount and give that back. That's going to be in addition to, if the wheel tax is passed, that's going into that second bucket. If we have the second bucket in place, we're able to graduate to the third opportunity of resources out there. Now, again, I'm not telling you tonight that we're guaranteed money from the state match, but we're eligible for it. But we also use, we also can pledge that other second bucket of money. We brought a lot of money into this council's mouth, into Congressman Vyscoski's mouth. If you look at Fashion Paris, we spent one point eight million dollars, we had to do a twenty percent match, okay? That was a complete rehab of all those roads in the system. West Street was also redone at about one and a half million dollars of money. So we're looking at these intersection improvements at Merrill Road, the Roundabout, other intersection improvements at Summer Street, we went out there, we can find a hundred percent local, a hundred percent match from the federal programs, or ninety percent, or eighty-twenty programs. We're still out there searching for those grants, but we're going to have, but this will allow us to have future programming, to have dollars available for those transportation and those road project programs out there. So when I look at these matching grants, this is, this is an opportunity for the state side, but it also opens the door and keeps us eligible and moving forward, because we go to NERC all the time. Mr. Garretas, you probably see this a lot, a lot of people fight these grants, and they get there, and they get approved, and they're shelf-ready, they're shovel-ready, the local match is not there, those programs, those federal dollars sit on the table, and are never funded. And they become orphaned funds after about ten years.
Yeah, and you have seen that, and the state has even caught on to that to a certain degree, and now they're requiring either cash within the account or a absolute dedication. So I'm working with a couple of stellar, one of the stellar grant communities, and I mean, we've got to have cash on the barrel head.
Another sample, or I believe all the council has a copy of what the application looked like if we turn something in, or, you know, we turn something in for the state. An example of one of the economic drivers, like the mayor stated, was South Street on the south side there. It's considered a major artery for the city, connects two major roads, that connects our sportsplex, that's one of our economic drivers for that area. If you guys have driven that road, you can see right where the curve is, all those cracks and all those alligators, and all the rutting, everything right there on the curve where you're going into the sportsplex, that rates that road as a two. That road should've been paved many years ago. So under this one, we could turn this in, we estimate this road about a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Half of that money we could get back from NDOT as part of this matching program, that eighty thousand dollars we saved, we could use on one of our local cul-de-sac roads, or one of the local roads that's outside of some of his residents.
And what you're seeing is, we're not going to see a global application to NDOT for the entire city for a million dollars, we're going to see multiple applications go in, because the school of thought in this, based on the classes that Dan's gone to and Greg's gone to, is that they're going to be looking at, you know, if you're denied, you're denied. So if you put one application in for one million dollars at roads at Crown Point, and for whatever reason you're denied, because there's one partial of that, because it's very competitive, your entire application gets denied. So we will be going in and putting individual road segments in to verify, because we have the Pacer program, we have the LTAP program that's eligible for now, and each one of these will be individually looked at in its own merit, and just like Dan said, like, for example, if this was a fully sample example that's going in and was approved, they would send us a check back for half the amount for this roadway, that initial amount that can be then redeposited back in our construction LRS fund, and then be used for the private roads or the public roadways in a more non-traditional sense, the cul-de-sacs and the non-economic drivers. This is how we're pledging that money to make the dollars at Crown Point grow.
Right. As the mayor said, part of that project was myself, Bill, in our office, and a couple of other gentlemen there. We totaled up about five hundred total hours in the last, like, six weeks of what we spent on this project. You guys see the amount of stuff in here? We had manually type all that in, we had to drive all those segments of roads, had to come back, rate them all, figure out dollar amounts for those. So it was a lot of work to figure out what we have out there, and when we worked, when we came back to see that more than sixty-some percent of our roads were roads that we should be doing currently, was kind of eye-opening. We knew the roads were bad, but we'd realized they were that bad. It also gives us a little bit to look at to say, maybe we need to spend more money on, like, maintaining our roads, more money in crack ceiling. We can't do that unless we have more money in place to do that. You spend a little more money on the crack ceiling to fix the sevens and the sixes, you stop the cracks from going down to a five. You might keep that road at seven or six for five or six years, nobody knows, but if you don't do anything to it, you're going to get water in there, it's going to splinter out and turn into alligator cracks.
Mr. Garretas, can you also address, because the ordinance is written where there's a reduction in year two, because we knew that the first year was the best time we could get the most money back on all our matches that were out there. Do you have those numbers that were reduced down to the fifteen dollars and twenty-five, what that means for the contribution back from the second bucket that we described?
Yeah, that...we have left that...yeah, no, that's the county's...let's see.
Sorry, we have a lot of papers up here.
I believe it was like six hundred and seventy thousand dollars total.
I believe that's correct.
So we go from about one point one million from the second bucket, which is the community vehicle support, whether it's commercial vehicles or passenger vehicles, and when we drop to fifteen to twenty-five for those entities, we go down to about six hundred and seventy thousand in year two of the program, which is a significant drop, but it does put us over a million dollars. But again, unless we're adding new money, because if they go to year two, in year three, and they still keep at the million-dollar threshold, only we're going to be eligible is the six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, because the wheel tax is an eligible resource. We're not going to get another local option income tax rebate in year seventeen, eighteen, and you don't have a rainy day fund. So you're only going to be able to pledge to six seventy-one against that, and if you completely fund it, you could be leaving three hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the table. But again, I'm looking at having a new source in bucket number two, so we can have bucket number three and work and shake all the trees that are out there to bring in not only the state's grant, but federal grants as well. The other application, we want to talk about the council because it was brought up, President Gore brought up, the Illinois plates issue. And tonight, you'll be seeing a resolution, two thousand and sixteen oh six ten. Hopefully, this council will send a resolution endorsing and continue the enforcement of that application. And I also charge our deputy chief, Mr. Janda, I believe you went out, chief, is that correct? To go through to deputy chief to talk about the Hammond program?
Yeah, I spoke to the Hammond lieutenant today.
Jim, did you address the council on your findings of that program?
Sure. I talked with the lieutenant over at the Hammond Police Department that's in charge of their program of catching violators that live inside the state of Indiana that have their vehicles registered outside of Indiana. So what they do is, they work with their apartment complexes and also with their elementary schools, middle school, and high school, tracking down and looking for people that do not have their vehicles registered with the state of Indiana that should. Usually, when they go to their apartment complexes, they work hand-in-hand, they look and see if somebody's been on the lease for at least sixty days, because by state law, you have to, once you move into the state of Indiana, you have to have all your vehicles registered with the state. So they've had a lot of success doing that, bringing in some extra revenue for projects.
Thanks. Now, Mr. Nichols, we also looked at, because this topic was brought up, it was impossible for the city to create a local ordinance to completely extract the fines to be locally, and I believe you want to give the council the reason why we cannot.
Right. In the...a lot of the charge I got to amend the ordinance at our last meeting, I did that, and I did some historical research regarding the ability of the city to pass a, its own ordinance that would deal with an area that's been preempted by the state, and that is through the motor vehicle code and licensing code. The state has authority and sole authority to deal with the licensing of vehicles and thereby the enforcement of the failure to license vehicles. And I came across a case in point that I recall, and some of us may remember that the city of Crown Point, when the Seatbelt Law was passed, the city was writing tickets for the Seatbelt Law, and all of the money that was being collected, being processed through the city court, our police officers doing their jobs, the clerk's office doing their jobs, all of that money was going downstate. So the city council decided to pass an ordinance making it a violation of the Crown Point Code for exactly the same offense. And we did that, I'd say, for three or four years, wrote, rather than the state violation, wrote the city code violation, and the city court collected twenty thousand dollars, and it was deposited in our general fund, and everybody was happy. Until the state board of council says, "What is this?" And at that point in time, the city had to pay back tens of thousands of dollars to the state for the collection of those fines and costs. So we cannot legally, in an area that is preempted by the state, pass an ordinance to save an offense.
So again, what Scott brought up is a valid point, because the more people that we can have in compliance gives us the ability to put back to our roadways and things of that nature, and our police department, we've had meetings about establishing those things. But in a perfect world, if we were able to catch everybody and they went through the appropriate fines, again, the state of Indiana would have the first-line share of those. But two, we'd put them in compliance, but the, at that application, that revenue source, if we were getting a piece of that funding back, would then dry up, because everybody would be in compliance. We'd still have a shortage in bucket number two, which again, that by itself is not even eligible funds, if collected, to go into the source of the matching funds that are offered. So we have kind of addressed all these things. It's not an easy thing, because any time you sit there and want to pass a tax on the community, we did this a few years ago, when we had the hurricane and the tropical storm that merged over southern Illinois and dropped itself on northwest Indiana, flooded the region. Majority of this council was here, and we saw that the need to address our flooding concerns. We looked at a user fee within our utilities to bring in, and if you look at every household that's out there, six dollars per month, and the commercial side at twelve, you know, on the private side, and those residential sides, it's seventy-two dollars a year. And a lot of the concerns we got, "I don't flood." Well, your water goes somewhere. The other concern is, "I have a small car, I don't cause the damage," but you use the roadways. And we want to protect the roadways for you, for the investment of your vehicles. It's been proven, Mr. Garretas will attest to that as well, that the AVs in communities are based on the infrastructure, which could be roads, sewers, your utilities. You know, we just got accolades tonight from our employees, we do a good job on making sure our water quality is good. We're charged up here as members, elected officials, to make sometimes not the popular decision, but the right decision, because we want to leave it in better shape than we received it. I think that's the model we all talk about, that when you became the elected official and you receive it, when you turn it over to the next and pass the baton, you left it in better shape than when you received it. And that's not to say that people before us didn't do that, they did the best they could, and they passed on to us, and it's our legacy to move on and take that and continue that tradition. So it's not an easy decision, and I think the numbers show that each one of your district's proportion, again, if those numbers weren't based on your roads are more deficient than others, those were based on roadway miles within your own district. Some districts are slightly wider and bigger. There's no doubt that I think everybody knows that Chaz probably got the largest district in Crown Point with roads, especially with roads. So it wouldn't be uncommon that he'd have the highest number up there on a mill, just a mill and grind type thing. You know, I also got, teenagers are also, at the high school level, are very keen on their senses, and sometimes they don't understand government very well, even though they're supposed to attend their class and learn about it. But my own sixteen-year-old daughter, you know, told me the other day, "Dad, why are you making people get new license plates?" I said, "Not getting license plates, license plates are part of the vehicles." She says, "Well, you're making everybody get a new license plate for Crown Point." I said, "It's a wheel tax." And she asked me, "What's a wheel tax?" She's going to get her license and drive, so I figured it's a good time to educate her as well. And we talked about this, and I said, "Well, right now, we have enough money to do about three miles of roads." And she goes, "Well, how long does a road last?" "It's about fifteen, fifteen, fifteen years."
If you're lucky.
"If you're lucky, if we do a complete maintenance program." She goes, "That's forty-five miles?" I said, "Yeah, but we have almost a hundred and forty miles." And they're, my sixteen-year-old, "Well, you don't have enough money to fix our roads." I said, "It's that simple. We've got to find three legs of the equation. We have one now, we don't understand it, and I think we all agree, it's not enough. We can all figure out over a budget time what to cut and what to add to it, but there's nothing much more you can cut." If you've been on this council a long time, to see that, we've cut everywhere, and you know, and we've added the right, we've earned the plea, public safety, added more police officers, putting in for grants. Congressman Vyscoski has been very good at Crown Point, bringing money back home. We work each and every day to fill out applications, we're not always granting them, but we're always filling them out. We want to do what's better by our community, but we also have to have buying. You've seen it with the sports complex. I mean, again, we've heard that a thousand times before. You're building a sports complex, that money should be in our driveways, in our roads, fixing our streets. That money comes from pledged money, it's not an open checkbook, you'll only be using the TIF district, can't be using your subdivisions. And it's a matching grant that Mr. White has done with this foundation, and Mr. White, as much as you could maybe write a letter to him, wasn't going to fund your road, he wanted to build the complex for the kids, to have something for the kids to do, and for the adults who still think they're kids, because it's a good thing to get your kids off the street. But it's also been a purpose for economic drivers, it's created jobs, it's created new homes. But with that, the city is growing, but we are a bedroom community, first and foremost. And we have sometimes created our own problem, because as a bedroom community, we're inviting people here to buy a house, build a family, raise a family, and eventually, those kids drop. And I eventually say that as we're two income families that are out there, the kids probably have cars themselves. So we've got fatter in the middle by adding more vehicles within our own mission statement of trying to be a bedroom community and not being a robust, commercial development-type city. But we are at a point where sometimes we've got to help ourselves, just like Mr. White says. He won't be the first one in, but if you've got matching money, he'll offer it. The state has now given us the first opportunity to give the locals, an opportunity here to help ourselves. And we can take our roads and our infrastructure, which is just as vital as the infrastructure below it, and we've all made those investments already, because it's very important on the utility side, to make Crown Point stronger. And it's a perceived value. Your homes hold their value, or they raised their value. We'll never apologize about your taxes in going, on your homes going up, those are by tax caps, one, twos, and threes. So if your property tax goes up, it's because your house is worth more. And I can only say that's our scorecard and how we measure the success that you elected us to do, because at the end of the day, that's the biggest investment you're going to have, is what you put in your homes. And we hear it all the time. Help us, help them, and let's have good roads that match already the great investment we have in Crown Point. So at this time, I, you know, before we open the public hearing, the other comments, I like to hear the council's viewpoints here, and, you know, we've got one shot, and again, it's not the easiest thing, nobody wants to put a tax. But local government is completely different, because if you look at the roads, especially over the last eight years, we've never cherry picked, based on a political affiliation of somebody to be a Democrat or Republican, or an independent, and we're fixing roads. And everyone who knows me knows that I've helped your district, unconditional, not because of political affiliations, because it's the right thing to do. And we've touched everybody's district collectively and tried to spread those things out. But sometimes we have to move a district from one area to another, because one district needed a huge investment, which takes up a lot of that five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But then we know the next year, we're going to come back to that district, and the other district that got that shot in the arm is going to have to sit one out. I don't think it's time for anybody to sit any out, because I don't think it's fair enough for the community. So with that, I'll throw...our council, any in there? Please dive in.
Well, Mayor, you know, I have a position on this, the council has my position on this. And when the ordinance committee, we looked at that very closely. We sit here and we have to make decisions. As you said, we don't like to make taxes. I don't like to make taxes on anyone, but the numbers... I don't like to make taxes on anyone, but the numbers tonight show me that it isn't needed, it's long overdue. Now, for the two new councilpeople here, it's not easy, and you'll learn as you go on, when you get many years here, you'll know that you have to do certain things that doesn't appeal to the public, but yet in the long run, it all works out and people, they come around. Now, if you vote, if you vote for the tax, that means you're wanting to take care of your roads. If you say, "I'm not going to vote for them," well, then you're telling your people that you're not going to take care of their roads. So, that means, what does it mean? You're elected to make a decision here. Some people's got better ideas about all of this. I mean, he's got an idea, you've got an idea, every councilperson here's got an idea. But, sometimes we've got to all join together and unanimously stick together and take this into effect. If we fail to do this, then every one of us should go resign, because we're not doing our job. I don't like to do it, but we've got to do it, whether we like it or not, and it all works out, because our roads are deteriorating faster than we can fix them, because we've got so much traffic in this town at this time. I mean, people coming through and fro, they're using this as a pass-through, but we can't, we can't decide who can come through our town. But, this is, this is a good situation. It may not come around again. I know, I know a lot of yous don't want to do it, but we're going to have to. I think we're going to have to do it, and I'm going to support it. I'll come locally say I will support it. Now, I don't know how the rest of yous want to do it, but you think, now, you council at large, you've got the whole city to think about, all over. I've just got one district to take care of, and we've worked with the mayor, he's helped me a great deal in my district, and it shows how the district has flourished since I've been there. And I hope that you people can say the same thing when you have some more years in your tenure here, but think twice before the decisions you're going to make tonight, make sure it's the right thing to do. But, you only know this right then and there. Thank you, Mayor.
Scott?
Well, thank you for letting everybody know how inexperienced me and him are.
You are!
Okay. But, according to the legislators downstate, we can only match up to one million as it is. Income tax, we're getting three-quarters of a million right there already back. That's it. We're already close to it.
So, you're willing to leave two-hundred-and-fifty thousand on the table, because you can't use any other fund? We don't have a rainy day fund, and you can't use any other cash that's already been seized, although it's only for this year. It doesn't continue over here.
But, we will be double taxed if the county does pass it. Yes, we can rescind on it, but we will be double taxed.
My understanding is, Mr. Garitas, you've also heard from legislators that first position from the cities, they're already starting to put together legislation, and would carve out those in first position.
Oh, that's true, that's true, and they're discussing how they're going to achieve that, and that is the expectation, because the theory of double taxation is something they do not want to see.
Also, back to the illegal Illinois license plates, okay, fine, we can't take that money and use it towards the roads, I understand that. Does every person in this city that has an Illinois license plate, they don't have to pay the twenty-five dollars, right? That's a lot of people, so guess what, everybody in here is going to go get an Illinois license plate like that.
Chris, you addressed that, that's going up.
That's going up.
Still a lot cheaper than you.
I don't think you're telling anybody, Scott, to go ahead and go get Illinois, break the law.
I'm saying that's what people...
Just making sure we're not encouraging people to break the law.
Of course not.
I decided, I was doing some financial numbers here. A quick question I had, what's the number of years approximately between when we repair a road, whichever way we do it, and when it has to be milled and paved again?
Like, I gave the example of Indiana Avenue. I said, "We did that ten years ago, we did it last year." So, about ten years, if you just do a mill and pave, heavily traveled roads, you're going to need to do them again. Your local roads, right in front of your home, doesn't get a lot of traffic, not the heavy, you know, you'll get the garbage trucks, stuff like that, but you're not getting as much heavy traffic, you might get a little bit longer out of those. The roads that we're getting down to that are like ones and twos, we have to do total rehabs on those, we're fixing the problem with the structure on those, hopefully you can get anywhere between fifteen to twenty-five. Nobody knows for sure. I mean, that's all part of your maintenance program. If we get a little bit extra money from the wheel tax, or we can throw more money into the crack ceiling portion of it, we can stop those extra cracks, block cracking, outlay the crack, and so forth.
Okay. My comments on this, I talked to, I went and talked to a lot of people, not just the people that, you know, solicited, they gave me unsolicited, you know, feedback, and I appreciate that, too, always, but I decided to go out and ask other people, you know, that's a lot, a lot of us people speak for everyone, you know, "What do you think of this?" I spoke to a wide variety of people, and my findings were about a third of them said, "No, absolutely not," and about a third of them said, "Yes, let's do this," and about a third of them were, "Yes, buts." Those, "Yes, but, can't we do something else? Can't we find another source of funding? Do we have to do this? I want to do this, I think we need to fix our roads." I heard anecdotes about, from some of the senior circles, about someone trying to avoid a pothole and going over the center line and getting into an accident, this is becoming a public safety issue, and they want this done, "But, can't we find a better way?" And so, I was doing these financial numbers here, just to try and figure out if this makes sense, to try and get the money up front here to do these, you know, like you said, do them when they're three to six as opposed to one or two. It does look like it makes a lot of sense to do that. I mean, a lot of the, and I'm sort of a yes-but myself, I guess you would say. I mean, I don't want to do this, but I definitely would like to fix our roads. I mean, people said, "Maybe the county will come through with the tax, maybe the state will come through with the tax, and they'll come to our rescue and they'll fund our roads, so we won't need this." You know, as far as counting on the, you know, county or the state to come take care of our problems for us, I said, "I'll believe it when it happens." And if it does happen, we can always repeal this, you know, we can always tell the mayor, "Sorry, you have enough money, we don't need this anymore." Ultimately, you know, the people say, too, "Well, it's not fair, there's people that are driving on our roads that aren't Crown Point residents, there's trucks coming through here, there's people commuting, passing through here on their commute." I say, "You're right, that isn't fair, but ultimately, these are our roads." When I say ours, I mean, ours is the people that own property here. This is our responsibility, and whoever, you know, did all the damage to them, it's ultimately our responsibility to keep them safe and to keep our neighborhoods nice. Ultimately, it's, I think it's going to be a good decision if we do this now and get our roads fixed, and in the long run, we'll have to spend less on our roads, as you were pointing out.
Good example was like we had in Marport today. An extra fifty-five thousand dollars, we didn't have to spend on it, that we now have to, that could do a whole nother road. Now, we've got to spend that money to fix extra issues there. And when we do these projects, we'll go out, mark up the roads, Bill can attest to this as well, people come out, "Hey, what are you doing?" We tell them what we're doing, "Well, why are you doing that? Well, we're fixing that." Because that, you explain it to them, they understand it. And then they might bring up, like you said, "Well, you know, I, why are we, what about people that drive in Crown Point? Well, do you ever leave Crown Point? Do you go to Maryville? Do you go on vacation anywhere? Are you paying for their roads?" So, I mean, you have that argument of, nobody stays within Crown Point's, you know, community bubble and only drives our roads.
Well, do me one favor if we do pass this, please yell and scream and never let it get this bad again.
We try to. We get at least one or two calls a day from residents that, "Hey, where's my road?" We look at our sheets and say, "Yep, your road's right there, we're going to try and get to it this year." We go through the whole paving system, we didn't get to the road. It calls back in the spring, "Hey, you can do our road this year?" "Oh, it was on our list last year, that's what you told us." How many people, it's on your list for three or four years, we just can't get to it? We have a list actively of a hundred-some roads that we know are the worst roads that we can pave today, and we still have another list behind that to do, and the amount of people that are upset, we can't get to all your roads, we don't have enough money for it.
One other thought, as we continue to go through here, I think we all live, based on history sometimes repeating itself, we all see what the school system is now today with the new school that's down on One Hundred Twenty-Fifth and South Main. Carol, you agree with this, that should have built it cheaper than we did it the second time?
Twenty million. What's the difference? Well, we, my son, just a side-tat move, but my son was in kindergarten when we started that campaign. He became a senior in high school when the school was finished. Had we done it then, what we should have done, we would have gotten twenty million-dollar more for twenty million-dollar less.
And then, our referendum that was passed, that's significantly a lot higher than what we're talking here tonight, was only for five million dollars. So, let's put things in perspective, that's out there. So, we, again, we have, you know, it's not like this has been in front of us for ten years or five years, we've been debating back and forth. This is the first chance we have to bite at this apple, because it just passed this year, okay? Something that we couldn't have done eight years ago or anything like that. If it was eight years ago, we probably had this discussion eight years ago, because it would have been a guaranteed source. And I think the one thing the community needs to realize, because I think you heard the butts about this money, I mean, the councillor, former councillor, Federer was here, he wanted to see this, he supports it, but he only wants to see it for going roads, not for salaries or other things and things of that nature. That's all it can go for, okay? We're not an open checkbook. Where treasure gets the dollars and deposits, the invoices and the claims that are drafted out of that account only can be for roads. It can't be for buying a police car, because a police car drives on a road, it can't get creative like that, it's got to be for roads. And I think that's the thing that the community is going to see, and going to see an alarming, a very fast-paced situation of roads being done at a much quicker pace than the current program that's out there now. So, I don't mean... I'll turn to the president, sorry.
Whether this passes or not tonight, this right here, absolute gold. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I've been looking for this kind of a tool for years now, have asked and asked and asked. So, bless your hearts, and thank you for doing it, I'm so glad. So, if nothing else comes of this, the wheel tax as a tool has gotten misproduced in a way that we've got it in our hands. Thank you so much for your time.
Now that we have every single segment in the road or in the city graded...
Fabulous.
We can say exactly, this is what...
We had this eight years ago with the videotape of the roads, and we had the council, but now this is the most updated...
This is the updated, this is the easier upkeep.
To continue to be eligible for this and just for our own engineering office benefit, this is a list that we have to update every year and grade every year.
Yep.
Because it will change after winters and even during the summer, it changes.
But, I'm just telling you that I requested this for years, and I appreciate having a new form, very much.
We snuck out the five hundred hours to get it for you.
That's, I, you know, time will spin. Thank you very much. And, and I, you know, seriously, I do congratulate you on that, that's a lot of work, and that's outside the normal day-to-day, but I appreciate that. I was at the IAC Budget Workshop on Thursday, and they said, "As of right now, county, if county passes a tax, we are double taxed." It is, that is the way that it is right now, and the legislature, they can say anything about legislative plan or anything, they're like, "Right now, they can be double taxed, first position or second position, we can pay it twice." So, I do want to mention that right up front. And I'll leave it to the public hearing and the discussion time that we have, if we make a motion.
Just want to make sure, we made a statement earlier, that what we're hearing from our legislators, they understand that the double taxation, and this council, if passed, has the ability to amend or rescind based on new passages. But, you've also heard, from Mr. Garitas, if the county does pass theirs, you're going to woefully receive much less than here. We have a best-fitting chance to have, if we're at first position, the legislation is created next year, then the double taxation's going away, Crown Point's protected, dollar for dollar, staying home. And I think that's the most important part, because once it gets to the county, you know, whether it's going to, and we argue this all the time, you know, we just saw the rebates come in based on local option income tax. I would think the venture to say that the median income in Crown Point, especially when you compare all the counties or cities and towns in Lake County, should fairly be pretty high, okay? And when you see us only receive seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and you see populations that are only double the size of us, and they receive three times the amount of money, you've got to question where, how those figures are coming from. I like to control our own destiny, keep our dollars here, and we don't have river boats, okay? We get a small percentage of that, East Chicago, Gary, and Hammond. You know, Hammond by itself, every time I talk about it, it'd be great to have thirty-two million dollars a year on river boats, to put it. We wouldn't even have, we wouldn't even charge our community an income tax or property tax because that would be the entire boat and sum. So, but we don't have that luxury, so we have the tools we have, so.
Carol?
Yeah, I've been going back and forth on this, because none of us up here ever wants to pass a tax, because we have to pay it, too. So, it's been difficult. When the week, last month, I got three phone calls against the wheel tax. In the subsequent month, I've gotten no phone calls against the wheel tax. So, I went out and polled people that I knew, neighbors, but then also people in my district, and I would say the majority, in fact, everybody that I talked to, pretty much, not that it was an extensive survey, but, you know, realized that, you know, we have roads, we have to repair them. My biggest concern was at the last month's meeting, it was not clear to me that this was not a guarantee. And I met with Mr. Niemeyer, and that kind of was concerning to me, that we're past the tax, we'll submit the money, but there's no guarantee we'll get the match. And at that, this was a week ago, I talked to him again on the phone, he seemed pretty firm on that, and I said, "Well, what are they using as objectives to evaluate who gets the tax?" He has no idea.
When we went to our break, and I, they do it on your economic, you want to speak on break?
The hundred-and-fifty million for next year is split into seventy-five million. Seventy-five million goes to counties above fifty thousand, seventy-five million goes below. There's sixty-two counties below fifty thousand and thirty above. So, the thirty counties is going to be turning in applications for that seventy-five million. Each town or municipality or entity has a max of one million, and the applications are based on economic drivers of connectability regionally to other communities, commercial areas, sports complexes were specifically named in there, and a connectability. So, that, those are the applications.
And he said also, the huge thing was, if you are a smaller community and don't have the tax base, you are more favorably looked at. So, Crown Point may necessarily not be on the tax.
But, the smaller communities, they also gave examples, don't have as much matching funds available.
Right.
Most of the ones we talked to, they're, some of them, they said, "Hey, we only have a hundred thousand dollars total."
Right.
So, they're more likely, yes, to probably get something there, but we have more money that we can put up with.
Well, but my point was, it's arbitrary on who's going to get the grant. There's nothing that's saying, if you meet these Fannie Mae markers, you're going to get this loan. That's not how it is. It's arbitrary decision, depending on, you know, who applies, how many, what the amount is for. So, we're going into this, I think, when the decision is being made tonight, I think I have to make the decision that we may not get the grant, which would be unfortunate. But, on the other hand, I applaud you for this. I've been on council close to twelve years. This, too, I've never seen, I mean, I've never had this in my hand. So, I applaud this, because it really opened up my eyes to the need here, and when people call me about their street, I can clearly say, "Well, we may get to it, we may not, but, you know, this is a great tool to have." So, I think when I look at tonight, I think I want to hear, you know, from the public who's here tonight, but I think it's important that the public realizes that if we pass the tax tonight, we'll all go to our roads, and our roads do need help, but I don't want to look like I'm passing this based on getting a grant of matching, and then we don't get it. Then your question is, "Why did you pass the grant?" So, I think that's something that, after talking to Mr. Niemeyer, looking at tonight, I think, you know, we've got to consider, is this a standalone to pass on its own? And I, you know, when I see the pictures and this paper, which is, again, I agree with you, it's fabulous, you know, the need is absolutely there, and I look forward to hearing what the public has to say, so.
I would echo a couple of things that Carol said at the beginning. Last month, I had three phone calls that were in opposition to the tax. After lengthy discussions, I think one of them actually kind of came around and goes, "I'm not, I'm just anti-tax, but I understand what you're saying, it makes sense why, you know, why we're going to invest in our roads." This month, I've heard from nobody.
I'm a big one on infrastructure. I mean, I think everybody knows that. Councilman Schweitzer and I had talked about this for several years, that we were having a hard time keeping up with our roads. And we wish that there was a mechanism in place that, that would generate some more money for the city of Crown Point. Just some, some things that I, you know, that I've been jotting notes down, you know, for instance, the Marport, which is in my district. Last year, Scotty was out there, I was, I was walking around and I mean, there's, even taking into account if we would've done the road earlier. And now the road has failed, so we're putting more money into it. But we're putting man-hours into it, you know, where curbs are sinking and water meters are filling up. And if we don't catch them in time, it's gonna freeze. And then we've got a whole, I mean, there's a, there's a whole other dynamic that goes to that, not only just the road, like the time that we spend, and if we don't catch it, the extra repairs that are in there. So if we can do anything to try and mitigate roads getting to that situation, to that far decomposed, I think we have to try and take that opportunity. And Mr. Garitas, he brought up, you know, the fact of, I don't see anything else that we do where, you know, where it is our money spent for our community and theoretically matched up to a million dollars brought back, where it all stays here, everything we pay, rather than if it's a county tax and then it goes to them and then it gets dispersed out. And like Greg said, you know, you may get back 10% of what we, what we put in. You know, if we take the bull, the bull by the horns and do it here as a city, that money stays here, we can dictate, you know, going through the work that you guys did, we can look at these roads, put it where it needs to go. And I know on the screen, it looked like my district was really neglected, I mean, it was 5 million plus, but, you know, my district does have bigger roads and I'm fortunate to have quite a bit in TIF areas where there are some roads that have gotten done through the help of the Redevelopment Commission and through TIF dollars that, that look nice and are maintained well. And I also have, I mean, I have a section in the older part here, but I also have a lot of newer subdivisions, which are kind of at that precipice right now. They're at the 15-year mark and as you drive through them, I mean, right now, nobody's complaining too much because the roads are okay, but you're starting to see the signs of they've reached their lifespan. And that's what I'm, I'm, you know, on Plan Commission, we, it's constantly new subdivisions, new subdivision, new subdivisions. You know, eventually, we do have to maintain those roads and we're, you know, we're kind of hitting that point right now. Speaking to, and I don't wanna speak for Senator Niemeyer, but I thought that he said, you know, we talked about the double taxation, I thought that he said, when he spoke to us last month, that he was already in contact with Legislative Services to draft legislation, legislation to pull out.
He did. He said it was the lead charger then?
Yeah, so we had first position.
Because he knew the double tax was a possibility.
Correct. And he said he was, and I think he said he was already having legislation drafted through services to carve out first position on it. So I mean, I hope that nothing's changed on that. I know it's still a concern. And then, and I think it's been touched on too, but, you know, one good thing about Crown Point, honestly, is as a community, we always come together. I mean, you see it every day, I see it every day out in my yard. Go over and help the retiring Mo's yard. Somebody comes over, they're done raking, they come help you rake. It's, and it's been this way, whether I was on Main Street, on 96th Avenue, in Penn Oak, wherever I've been, it's been the same concept every place I live. It's always the community coming together, your neighbors, your friends, everybody helping out. Mayor, you mentioned, 2008, I saw the stormwater board at that point. We came to the stormwater board, we've got huge flooding issues. A mechanism we can put in apply, $6, $12 for stormwater fee. Passed unanimously through the stormwater board, forwarded up to the council, and I believe that it passed 7-0 at the council. I, I think that that was because, once again, as a community, we saw the necessity for the money and to fix a problem. We're, you know, we have an old part of this city that needs addressed and that money could be not only used for that, but for the grants. You know, we got the West Street Grant, which solved a big problem on the south end of town. The school, you know, staple money from the school. They came around with it, you know, can we do a referendum? I mean, personally, I went door-to-door and supported the referendum. It's, you know, without a good school system, you know, the city's only as good as the school and the, and the school's only as good as the city. So, you know, we came together at that and passed that referendum. So we've done it for the stormwater, we've done it for the school. I can tell you by driving in other communities, even in Lake County, when you see the roads go bad, you see everything start to follow with it. The houses go bad, the houses get deteriorated, the businesses leave for someplace that's, you know, if they're renting it, they're gonna go rent someplace that has better infrastructure. It just follows. As the infrastructure crumbles, everything else around it starts to follow that path too. So, I mean, as we came together, like I said, with stormwater, with school, I don't see how we can't, everyone come together here and, and improve, you know, really what is probably one of our, our biggest assets, our roads. You know, it's a quality of life issue, so I will support it.
I don't know if we had on the slide or not, but the 3 through 1 rating, there's about 44 miles of roads was in that 30, you know, plus percentage. Just if we keep on our three miles roughly per year, it'll take us over 11 years to fix just those roads without anything else falling into it. If we can pass this and get that extra money and get our, our goal of, you know, the additional, you know, 10 miles per year, I mean, it's easy math, it'll take, you know, just over four years to do all those roads. So we'll be playing catch-up forever if we keep it at three miles.
Agreed.
I'll be concise, I know we wanna get to the public hearing, I just have a few points. I think it's disconcerting and personally unacceptable that just in my district alone, there are 60 segments that are rated 1, 2 and 3. Our great city should not have any roads that are 1s and 2s at all. So, and that's where we want, I think that's the goal that we need to be at. I'm sure, and my district is one of the smaller ones, so I'm sure in many of yours, you have more in the 1, 2 and 3 areas. The, I think at the beginning, when this first came out, we had an electorate that had an incomplete understanding of, of the legislation. So I too agree over the last several weeks, while nobody likes the tax, we all know that, we can clearly see that the advantages outweigh the disadvantages of everything that we've said so far. And I think that in a worst-case scenario, even if the match is not there, I think it's the prudent thing to do, it's the wise thing to do, and it's, it's, it's just, it's not right for people to live in a, live on a block where their roads are 1s and 2s. It's not right for people to drive on a street that's a 1, 2. It's, it's, it's not acceptable and I think we could do better. That's all I have.
Thank you. Good work, Dan. Mr. Garitas, did you have anything else to add to the?
Just, Chad, I just wanted to comment, that's why TIF works so good, is once you start completing the infrastructure, you kinda get what Chris said. Once you start completing the roads and the infrastructure, the development happens around it. And that's been the story of every TIF district in the state of Indiana. And the people that drive through actually will divert to the new roads and use the commercial developments in those new roads. And then more commercial development happens. So that's exactly what happens in the TIF district. We can't, we can't make the entire city a TIF district because we wouldn't have any money to pay the payroll. So, you know, that would be optimal, but that will happen. So, yeah, a dedicated source of revenue for a dedicated reason is why you have over 47 or more counties and, and a lot of rural ones, they were gonna bring in and up any anyways. And it also hits the commercial traffic, you know, because we know when a lot of the damage is done, plus in northern Indiana, you've got weather. Let's face it, I drive all, all over this state, Evansville last week, Thursday and Friday, their roads are not as bad. They don't take the weather beat like you, Chris.
One other final thought, and I will open up to the public for their comments, is the fact that you guys went to that, those meetings and they described the number of people, the number of counties or cities that could be eligible in towns. If they've already had an established wheel tax in place, they do not get to use that new money going forward. So that does cut our playing field down in the sources, so they'd have to use rainy day fund. And so they're gonna have to measure, are the roads in a situation where they would have to dissolve the rainy day fund? Maybe smaller communities that may be strapped for dollars? And the establishment of the, only their low check that would come in, and that would be based on population. So I think we have a, a real fighting chance to get grants, but I don't want that to be the, I think Carol brought a valid point that, and I heard some of the other council members as well, that that would be the third bucket bonus. But we need to fill number two because we, like Andrew says, we need to start eliminating 1s and 2s now. And we can do that without the state's help, if they're up, it'd be appreciated. So with that, we're gonna open this up for the public comments. Alls we do is ask for people to come forward against. You've heard a lot of discussion here. If you're simply against it and wanna just put your name in record, we'll start with the people that are against it. This working party, so you kinda said, let's, but 10 minutes for people that wanna talk about the, against the tax, and then we'll open up for about 10 minutes for people that wanna support the tax, and then we'll go that route and see where we're at. So at this time, we'll open up and we'll start with people that are against the tax. Alls we do is ask to come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you can make your, your comments, simply the fact that you're against it, or you've got some things you wanna add to the backlog that maybe we haven't considered, so.
So I'm against it. I'm Jennifer Rourke, 1285 Millennium Drive. Sitting here, listening to this, now hearing that we are gonna be double taxed, I mean, I knew that, we pay an excise tax when we get our plates, that is, that is supposed to go to the local roads and health programs. I've been told there's not gonna be a gas tax because the people who are in legislative don't wanna do that until after they're elected, which I'm pretty sure that'll go, the gas tax will go up, that can go toward the roads. Ultimately, now we're, you're telling us that we will be double taxed. I think that's absolutely ridiculous, that this is gonna be put on the residents to be double taxed and to not even be guaranteed that you're going to get that money. We've already talked about the fact that, yes, there are people that come into the, to the roads, but let's talk about the people who are, have commercial businesses in Crown Point, whose huge trucks are not licensed and plated in Indiana. What about them? They're not going to be having to pay this wheel tax. It's going to be primarily on the residents. So even aside from the people who drive through Crown Point, we have businesses that have trucks that do, and they work in Crown Point. We talked about, you guys talked about the income tax, you talked about the rainy day fund that supposedly you don't have. What about the SCA 67, which goes with the bridge grant from the state, which does not require a tax increase? So my suggestion is that this council explore other options, use the money, I realize we need roads fixed, but I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not okay with being double taxed. It's the principle of the matter, not just the $25. Opening this tax could, could, what, put us at $25 per wheel eventually? Because there isn't enough money and especially if you guys don't get, if we don't get this grant, so what does that open the door for? $25 this year and 2017, 15 in 18, then 50, then 75, then four, all four wheels are taxed. So, thank you for your time.
Tim DeLuca, 1015 Crestwood Street. I spoke last month as well. I have a clear understanding of what you guys are doing and I appreciate that. I'm not in favor of the tax just because it's another nickel-and-diner scenario and I'm just, with the last lady said, I'm more worried about the double tax and the gas tax that might be proposed. And then also another aspect of it, just think, I have a business in Crown Point and I have several vehicles as well, and I will have to pay the tax on all those vehicles and I will have to pass those costs to the consumers. So it's almost like a triple tax. So think of how many businesses are in Crown Point that have X amount of vehicles, now have a larger overhead, will also have to pay, push those costs onto their consumers as well. So now we're looking at another tax and who knows how many other taxes. So that was my main point. You guys covered everything else, but I do understand the need for roads, I like having good roads, it's just, I wish there was a weather, another way and I just can't be in favor of the tax, not knowing, A, if it's guaranteed, B, if there's several taxes along the way, especially the gas tax, which the federal, the state and the local have all talked about in recent months. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Can we give her name again?
Uh, Tim DeLuca, D E L U C A.
Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
I've been in Crown Point for 22 years.
John, can we have your address, please?
1801 West 95th Avenue.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if you're gonna make it a fair tax, because I'm a senior citizen, I don't know, is there a discount for seniors?
The state law, the state law is capped at, I know that you heard some information from Jennifer, that it's an arbitrageal number. The state law caps it at $25 per vehicle and $40 for commercial vehicles. They don't give any provision in there for a discount based on seniors and/or mileage usage. So, I mean, I mean, so, you know, where they can record, could you get a mission test in every two years or something like that, that they can record mileage? There's, there's no mechanism for that to take place yet. And I don't, we, we have not heard any legislation that would, would change that. So it has to be a fair tax across the board. If you have a vehicle, whether you drive it once a month or you drive it every day, it's a fair tax across the board.
Okay. I have two antique vehicles, they're in storage six to seven months a year. I have to pay a full bulk to those two? I can only drive one at a time?
If you give them registered, through the registration process, if they're registered plates to the state of Indiana, you'll, you'll be assessed at $25.
Okay. I have another question. Are municipal trucks, vehicles gonna be taxed?
No. Buses are also, school buses are also exempt. It's part of, that's the only exemption of the, of the statute.
All right.
Anybody else against? We'll close the against and we'll open it for anybody that's in favor. Anybody else against, now in favor, wanna come back up? Anybody else that wants to come forward and speak on this? Going once, twice, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. And again, I just wanna go on record again saying that nobody's up here explaining the fact that you are gonna be double taxed. We had Senator Niemeyer here, that, again, he needs, he needs help from his friends, the legislator, and, you know, legislation to do that. We've had a conversation with Ed Soliday on the state, on the House side, and they, they liked that idea that if the counties who would not pass this to help the local municipalities, that's why you as a local council now have the chance to, for the first time, make the decision for yourself locally. They recognize that and they're gonna make that where somebody else comes in the backside of it, that you cannot be double taxed. And we will work with IAC. Matter of fact, I have the mayor's roundtable here on June 17th here in Crown Point, and that will be one of the topics of discussions as we showcase the city of Crown Point to other elected officials and who have IAC here. We'll have state representatives that are here on both the House and the Senate side, and we'll echo those sentiments again about that legislation, about not being double taxed. And again, if the tax, I think you heard it a lot in clear, if the state came in, I think with Senator Niemeyer being here, that's the reason the second year it was reduced, to give the full faith and credit that the legislators would do something that would help everybody to lower that, so you're not bearing all the load, you're bear, you're bearing some, and that the gas tax would be looked at. And if you weren't here the last time, we talked about that, if you're not aware of it, Indiana is a donor state, your gas tax. That means we only collect all the gas tax, about 92% of that stays here, we put the rest of the funds to the other states on the East Coast. So if you want all your money to stay here, okay, you got a, a long road, it's like moving the boundary lines for schools. Okay? Indiana's a donor state, that's gonna, it must take a, a national act for that to, to change. And, but the gas tax was definitely something they considered, and I, and I would, I would echo everybody's sentiment out there, the reason the legislators did not tackle it this year, because it was an election year. There's no doubt about it. And I guarantee if this was an election year, this year, I'd still be supporting this because this is the right thing to do. And I would never hide behind an election because this is local and 90% of your things that happen, you know, are local dollars being spent in your own backyard here, will improve your quality of life each and every day. So I hope the, my fellow colleagues up here hold that same sentiment, that this is not about politics, it's about policy and about the infrastructure. So we've had a lot of discussion. I'll open up again for discussion if, if, if some of the comments that were made by the residents, if the council wanted to address those, or if not, we can entertain a motion to take a look and see where this is gonna go.
Just to reiterate, I'm not sure if they were here last month, but the way our ordinance is being voted on tonight is 25 per vehicle this year, next year drops to 15 per vehicle.
And we try to somehow come in the middle. And I think, you know, when you go to the table, you have to know that you aren't going away with everything you get. And I think there's nobody up here that wants to pass this tax, and yet we still have to look at the need and a lot of other things. And I just think that that kind of was an appeasement to help both parties, that this year, if we get $25 and we do get the match, we get the lion's share, which is great for us. And then next year, we still would like to have money for the roads, but then we don't charge the lion's share. It drops to 15, which is a significant decrease, especially with parents that have kids. And hey, who has just one car? Everybody's got minimum, what, five? It seems like some years, that's how many I had in my driveway. So anyway, I just want to thank everybody that came and gave your opinion because it is of value to us up here. So, thank you.
It's a 60% increase from year one to year two.
Counsel's pleasure. Chris, did you ever?
Yeah, just wanted to say, just one more comment there, that if we don't get the match, I think we'd be extra glad that we had this because we're going to be in real trouble if we don't have the money to get these roads. I mean, it's getting, as you pointed out, it's getting exponentially more expensive to fix this problem that we've dug ourselves into a hole, perhaps pun intended here, that our roads have gotten this bad, and it's just going to get worse if we don't fix it. And if we don't get the grant, the matching funds, we'll be glad that we had what money we do have coming in from this to keep us out of trouble.
I think Scotty could attest the fact that, from engineering to Public Works now, our winters, even though we got away with not having as much salt last year, which was good because the weather wasn't coming in as far as snow and rain, the temperature fluctuation over the last four or five years is, you don't need it to snow and rain to have the frost and freeze elevate and shift your concrete and your blacktop.
Exactly. When you have those alligator roads that Dan was showing, and those cracks in those roads, that water is just penetrating in there, and when that, when we get that cold weather, that freezing thaw is just devastating on these roads. And we've got to get them, we've got to get them fixed. I'd love to be out of the hot hole business. I mean, it'd be amazing, but yes, our weather plays a major factor in that.
As you know, I did hear your comments that you do need, can we look elsewhere for the money? And I've looked elsewhere here, and the amount of shortcomings that we have in our road funding here, I mean, unless we're open to the idea of getting rid of the police and putting Crown Point on the honor system, I don't think we're going to find it.
Well, are we here to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
What's your motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2016-0506.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Egor.
No.
Councilmember Breton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffrey.
Yes.
Councilmember Funnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Kyers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sauerman.
No.
Councilwoman Gressler.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed as 5-2, and we appreciate everybody who came out and spoke on behalf of or against it. But being part of the process is very encouraging because we welcome everybody to Crown Point to be involved. So I think over the last 30 days, we saw the crowd diminish because I think the more the information got out there about the program helped calm some of the waters, and I think every person that was up here had an opportunity to explain it, whether you report against it. I think you took the information, explained it to the community, and the community kind of made their decision themselves. So we appreciate all of everybody's hard work. We also appreciate the work that was led through Public Works and Engineering, especially Dan and the hours that were put in, through a lot of hours, El Kozlowski, your team, and Scotty, and Greg Fukowski, everybody that went through this. Greg Garitas, thank you for bringing the financial aspects to it. And the council further ordinance committee because they took on a lot of heavy lifting early on to pass on the information. So at the end of the day, I think we're going to have better roads going forward, and the proof will be out there in the asphalt, as you see. So thank you for everybody and their efforts. Okay. This is almost appearing like the plan commission is being like this. But we'll go right into new business. Resolution 2016-0608R, a resolution approving the deduction from assessed valuation from structures in the economic revitalization area for the Crown East Warehouses LLC at 555 East 110th Street. And this is Ronald Morris, the owner. And I'm going to turn this over to our Madam Chair of the HRDC meeting, and Laura Sauerman will give an update to the council of what took place prior to the council meeting.
Mr. Morris is building a, building similar to what he has done before. He has to do this through the city. We did recommend, he requested tenure abatement on the Missouri Steel Building Act East. That was the committee's recommendation in unanimous.
What is the council's pleasure on this resolution?
I would move to approve Resolution Number 2016-0608R.
Over for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by an aye.
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you for your patience today. Next up, Resolution 2016-0609R. This is a resolution approving a deduction from assessed valuation, saying this is for new manufacturing equipment and economic revitalization area. This is for Craig Fowler and for the business called Angry Betty Brewing, located at 11000 Delaware Parkway. And this one's a little bit, got some moving parts to it. And Madam Chair, again, I defer the floor to you to explain to the council for appropriate action.
This is going out on Delaware Parkway. It had come before other boards, VCA given variances. While it has been kind of advertised as a restaurant, which is not, an accepted abatement option, actually, the meeting tonight showed, and Mr. Kiper is here and the other here to discuss any questions you may have, that the majority of the building will be used for manufacturing. The brewery part of the building, about 65 to 70% of the building will be at a brewery. The other part will be for a restaurant tasting area. We worked through some of the concerns that went with that. However, the manufacturing equipment is all new, and quite a large investment is going in. The overall investment is in the neighborhood of $2 million. So the recommendation from the committee, if you can follow the numbers here, was to abate 70% of the building for the requested 10 years, in kind of reference to the square footage and how it's being used, and to abate the manufacturing equipment for what is more historically traditional for us for a total of six years. So, Mr. Kiper, when you answer questions, if I didn't speak very correctly. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Right out of the park here. So.
Is this an ordinance now?
No.
It's still a resolution.
This is still a resolution, yes.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2016-0609R.
One second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by an aye.
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Okay. Number three. This is ordinance 2016-0609. This is a zone change. Dave Bryan, petitioner, Lake County Greenhouse Corporation owner, rezoned from R1 residential, single-family home and a B2 business, district restaurant and commercial use, located at 915 East North Street. This received a favorable recommendation by the Plan Commission, and I will immediately turn this over to Anthony Schleter, our planner, to give a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. The petitioner is requesting a zone change from R1 to B2 located at 915 East North Street. The property is approximately two acres and currently contains an unoccupied single-family home. Property is adjacent to a larger five-acre parcel that is currently zone B2, that sits on the corner of 109th and Indiana Avenue, better known as Lake County Greenhouse. The petitioner plans to purchase the entire seven acres and demolish the existing single-family home, and the building below 109th and Indiana. Make room for a mixed-use commercial development along the front edge of the corner. The greenhouse structures are to be reclaimed into a farm, table, restaurant, brewery, with a completely glass-enclosed dining area. So in your packet, in the minute, I included in the minutes from both the zone change petition as well as the workshop, in which Mr. Bryan described the plans for the entire corner, so you could see that the project was very well-received by all Plan Commission members, and a unanimous favorable recommendation for the zone change was made.
And I just want to comment, the package you here put together, I really appreciate the fact that you listed each board member's comments. It's almost like if you weren't at the Plan Commission, you didn't actually read them as if you were there live. So I appreciate the detailed report here.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, we'll bring this back. Obviously, we have, we have three members of the city councils on the Plan Commission, and I'll immediately start with the council president. If you want to bring any details to the council that you can share.
Could not be more excited. Can't wait to see this property approved. The handful of people who are here, nearby neighbors, had concerns about ours and trespassers potential. But I think we were able to talk to them about that, that with the improvements, probably increased property values, and that they were near first, and as Mr. Bryan wants to be a nice neighbor, we would work, we would work some of those details out as the plan happened. So I think everybody left happy, or at least looking forward to the project. So, that carried away. I'm hungry. I'm ready.
Same here. I couldn't have said anything better than that. I've been, I've been wondering when something's going to get done for, God knows how long. So.
One of the biggest complaints I have in my district.
Yep.
Has been the greenhouse. And, I mean, what you brought for your concepts, I mean, it's something that you don't see around here. It's really, it's a good idea. I'm anxious. I hope this goes through. I'm anxious to see, you know, some sort of site over playing.
You indicate farm refresh to the table, right?
Correct.
Organic?
Yes.
Home run. Oh, I, 60 days of just being organic, and it's, it's a transformation. So, I mean, the bear part of it's probably, you know, it counteracts it a little bit, but, you know, if you walk out there revenue neutral, you're probably ahead of the game yourself. I think this is a great concept. I think you looked at that location, and I think that's been the biggest challenge of the seven acres over there, is what to do in that corner. You're butting a sports complex, you're butting a long-time residential area. You've also had a historical building, so to say, of a business icon with the greenhouse. And I think you kind of found something that was very unique to put all that together that everybody goes, you know what? I think we all can get behind that. So what a great idea. And we're looking forward to, you know, obviously, the council will think, see fit tonight to give it the green light for you to go out there and do your thing out there and really redefine that corner. You've seen other developments going around with the lofts, and you've seen the sports complex, you've seen some houses that's around that area now because of all the transformation of the improvements of the roads and the infrastructure and the vision of that corridor. I can imagine what this is going to do to really kickstart and keep that vision going. So, but again, it is an ordinance, and there's no other college by the council. I think you heard from your colleagues who represent you guys well on the Plan Commission, entertaining a motion on this would be probably a timely advance.
I'll motion.
Yeah, reading title only, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve 0606.
Reading title only, hold over for a second reading.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by an aye.
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Any discussion on this? If not, call roll, please.
Okay. Councilmember Egor.
Yes.
Councilmember Gressler.
Yes.
Councilmember Jeffrey.
Yes.
Councilmember Funnis.
Yes.
Councilmember Kyers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sauerman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gressler.
Yes.
The ordinance passes 7-0. You've been approved, and congratulations. And are you heading out there now?
Yep.
We have, we have ordinance out for loud noise, so just be careful going into this late. So congratulations, and we look forward to the groundbreaking and the ripping cutting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, Corinne, state the rules.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor with an aye.
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next up is FCC notification for spectrum manager lease ownership disclosure information and spectrum lease agreements. Christie, you have some information on this?
Actually, sounds a little more in-depth than it actually is. My current area that the city uses to maintain its water meters and its receiving, actually, something called CENSUS that has a FCC license for the radio frequencies that we use. New regulation for the FCC is required that that entity actually sublease those radio frequencies out to us. Basically, we need to provide this lease agreement through the public meeting in order to do so, abide by those regulations. Generally speaking, we bring this to Board of Works. However, the FCC has required that the city council and mayor put their, fix their manages and their signatures on this agreement. So, that being said, it's just formality. It's something that we've been using since 2007. It's just that change of regulations that's requiring us to take somewhat of a sublease ownership over those radio frequencies that we use.
So, as I was reading all this document, I have a signature fixed on here, and we declare the group council through an adoption, that they're all listed, the corporate application. Do they need signatures as well, or just my signature?
I believe all city council, Attorney Nichols will take a look at it, and begin its formality, but I believe everybody on this council needs to make some questions.
the police department does a great job, but this is a, it's always good to support because, you know, when it's your neighbor, or somebody gets called upon that they didn't do something, they're going to be calling upon you to say, listen, what the police department did, they're coming after me on a, on a little nickel and dime thing. I think we all learned tonight that every nickel and dime adds up, and if the resolution does get support by the council tonight, you have something that says it, listen, it's the right thing to do, and nobody encourages anybody to break the law, so residents have sixty days to comply. It might be, again, it might be just somebody that's leasing a vehicle, which is legal, as far as if they're working for a business that's outside the area, and they have a take-home car that lives here, but it's the ones that have bought and home in Crown Point, or moved in the state of Indiana, and are gainfully employed, and they live here, and so will be, that's the duration we're looking, we're looking at, so.
I move to adopt Resolution 260610R.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Chat.
Good chat. And any discussion?
Thank you for bringing this up. Thank you. I wanted this done for a long time, thank you.
We got it, we got it now, we just got to work together and bring it together, so.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, no other discussion, all in favor, signify by an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, thank you. Okay, next up is FCC notification for respective manager lease ownership disclosure information and respective lease agreements. Christie, you have some information on this?
I think I can give a quick one.
You have it? Okay.
Actually sounds a little more in-depth than it actually is. My current carrier that the city uses to maintain its water meters and its receiving, actually, something called Census that has a FCC license for the radio frequencies that we use. New regulation for the FCC is required that that entity actually sublease those radio frequencies out to us. Basically, we need to provide this lease agreement through the public meeting in order to do so, abide by those regulations. Generally speaking, we bring this to Board of Works, however, the FCC has required that the city council and mayor put their, fix their management signatures on this agreement, so. That being said, it's just formality, it's something that we've been using since 2007, it's just that change of regulations that's required in this to take somewhat of a sublease ownership over those radio frequencies that we use.
So, as I was reading all this document, I have a signature fixed on here, and we declare the, through council through an adoption, that they're all listed, the corporate application, do they need signatures as well, or just my signature?
I believe all city council, I believe Attorney Nichols will take a look at it, and begin its formality, but I believe everybody on this council needs to.
David, we're under the FCC notification for the respective manager of these for census.
Right, like that, that reform should be passed and done.
What I'm asking for, as I read through this, I see a signature page for, my signature should be fixed on page one. The ownership disclosure information is just strictly introducing who the mayor and the council members are.
That's correct.
And then I fix my signature again on page four.
That's correct.
And basically, the council is, what this is, the council is an acting committee with the authority deciding under me.
That's correct.
Do we need a resolution? Do we need a motion?
Motion, people, fix motion authorized signature.
I'll move to authorize mayor's signature on the FCC notification for respective manager lease ownership disclosure information, respective lease agreement.
Hold on a second. Do we have a second?
Six.
We have a second, Chris. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, signatures are complete. This is for you. Okay. All right, moving rapidly along here tonight, we'll go right into Resolution 20160611R, Resolution adopting uniform internal control standards for the city of Crown Point. This is a document here that's working with the clerk treasurer, and Christie's done a great job of, of working with the state board of accounts, and establishing new and approved internal controls with the city of Crown Point. I know that Greg Garitas is still here, and Greg, can you just be sure that this is something happening across the state, as the state board of accounts is asking for enhancement and tighter regulations?
Yes. Around the country, municipalities have been going double entry, and they've had internal controls, because they've had outside auditors, and here in the state of Indiana, we've had the state board of accounts, which is, and I'm not criticizing them, but they were, they were really here to audit, not to provide services to you. So Indiana got way behind on the internal controls. So what they're trying to do now, they need to catch up because of GAAP and GARP and all those accounting regulatory principles that I deal with as a CPA all the time. So this, this is step number one, there, as I spent some time with the clerk treasurer's office today, there's important steps coming, like the writing up this procedure specific to this city, and then the, the actual audit of the internal controls, making sure that they work. So those will be steps coming in the future here. So this is not singling out Crown Point by any stretch. All cities, towns, counties, and everything have to pass this as step number one, and then a lot to go, and a lot will take place over the next couple of years.
I know, Christie, this, your office downstairs is interrogating with a lot of new information, and we appreciate the timeliness and the professionalism that we put together on it. We'll take that.
I move to adopt Resolution 20160611R.
We have a motion to adopt, we have a second, any discussion?
Just real quick, this indicates that there's supposed to be something attached, the Uniform Internal Control Standards for Indiana Political Subdivisions is attached here too. I did not receive the document, should I have?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I googled it, so I found it on my packet.
Should we see the? Right, but statement says that there is a document, so we just didn't get that. Right, that would be a resolution without the internal control standards, this idea. I believe that's what it would be.
I think what she's at indicating that there, the internal control standards, are there a list of standards that?
It's a six-page document.
To take, yeah, there's, to take two, how do we create the documents?
Right, they haven't been, they weren't given out to each council member, but it wasn't attached to here. We had reset those out packets to all the council members and to department heads on internal controls.
It's about fifty-page, yeah.
Yeah. We didn't attach it this time.
I found the six-page one-on-one, you guys have the one-on-one.
We didn't send it out recently, we sent the resolution. We have sent, it was about March when we sent everything out, informing everybody that the internal controls, there's packets. We even had a couple of webinars where the department has half attended so far for the... Okay, I'm just, this piece of paper says something is attached to it, and I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something that's supposed to be attached to it. No. I just want to be able, yeah, I want to make sure I'm voting on what I'm supposed to be voting on. So we have seen that, is what you're saying, that, that it had come out a couple of months ago, but we're just getting the resolution. Right, it's just the resolution tonight.
If I may suggest that at the time that you file this, depending upon the folder to the council, you'll attach that printed version too.
I will, thank you.
For the resolution, the document.
Right, that was my question.
So the way, so that way, if there's, anybody does a free reading for the document, it's all complete?
Together, very good.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have, beat the nose, which are seven zero. Okay, let's see, Resolution 20160612R, Resolution establishing materiality threshold and adopting principles contained in the exam directive 2015 dash six as amended, and, again, David, I'll let you briefly address because of the...
Right, presently, by operation statute, since the city of Crown Point has no uniform standard for a threshold adoption, and has not adopted one, it's currently set by statute as zero, which means that any accounting malfunction, no matter what the cause, would have to be reported to the state board of accounts. In reading the literature, and reading what the documentation that Christie and her offices provided for me, and doing research in the statute, looking, and speaking to our financial advisor, Mr. Garitas from FSG, the council has the opportunity now, by way of this resolution, to adopt a threshold, at which point, an error, a mistake, a, how else to characterize him, variant, irregular variance, shortages, would have to be reported to the state board of accounts. I'm not talking about outright thefts, those in all occasions would be reported to the state board of accounts and to our local prosecutor in turn. We're talking about those errors that would be determined to be irregular, a loss, a shortage, and we have to establish, or not establish, a degree of materiality, it's suggested that perhaps a $500 amount should be set, or $1,000, or $250, or, Greg, do you have any suggestion regarding city of...
I've seen many cities use $500. And, you know, here in Crown Point, we've balanced to the T in the past, and, and it's, again, this is, this is another thing with the internal controls, they're trying to get you to establish it, you know, and, and if it's $100, it's immaterial to them, the point is that you'll still find it, the books will still balance, so.
Does this have anything to do with the fact that they're hourly rating it up to $100, and they're just going to be more involved?
No, sir, but when they're getting more than I am, that...
Seems kind of coincidental.
Yeah, it does.
Increasing their workload. So I guess what has been presented here today with a, with a zero was for the council to come up with a dollar amount that they feel comfortable, so they can put that in the resolution, so that would be...
That's correct, fill in the blank.
Correct. Correct, okay.
Do you need to use a motion to correct the grammar on here, or is that something?
Right, I mean, uh...
That's part of the variances and losses and shortages and...
Right.
If there's not more than 250 words that are missed spelled, we move on.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
We got a teacher up here.
Yeah, it should be, is S?
Yes.
TS, no, there's two.
It's doesn't, it's doesn't own the presence, or is there?
Don't you have a teacher there?
What is, what is the, what are we?
Do we have a number?
Like you said, Greg, you said the average is five hundred.
Not the average, but that's generally what people are using.
I would move to replace zero with $500 for the materiality reporting incidence in Resolution number two, or...
Adopt the resolution.
And adopt resolution with that amendment, number 20160612R.
And the punctuation is found in correction.
And the, yes, punctuation is found in corrections. Thank you, Mr. Edson.
Okay, so we've got the amount, the resolution, and the grammar, all in one motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, thank you. Okay, let's see. Next up is an ordinance number 20160608, additional appropriation. This is a transfer, serious transfer, again, this comes from the council, since we're going out of a series, we're going to be getting internally, this is for the recent hire of all the firefighters, and their initial issue, and for uniform. Mark, we, any additional information for this?
This one's requesting $1,725 to be transferred from the 3,100 series to the 4,400 series to pay for the uniforms of the new hires this year. When the budget was prepared last year and on previous years, that line item, 4,400 series, is not funded. And then, we have a year within, we hire somebody in January, February, and we have to transfer money.
Isn't that the email that you sent us today, Laura? That we're talking about? This one is.
This one, this one's from before.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the same one, we got it earlier today, or...
This is not the right one. Which one did we read? Where we're on the, the ordinance for additional appropriation, this one is, this one is not the uniform, this was for Medicare, we have some of the transfers. Do you have a copy of yours with you?
Questions was two.
We have two, we have an ordinance which discusses the transfer of the Medicare, Medicare funds, and then the other one is a resolution to transfer to the uniforms.
Let me see, one with the transfer, we, we only got the ones with additional appropriations. Okay, so let's, okay, so we, all right, let's, let's get back to the establishment there, okay, that we have the order. We have, what's in front of you is the ordinance 20160608.
Right.
This is the mayor of the clerk treasurer, and chief, chief of the Crown Point Fire Rescue has determined additional funds for the amount of $30,963 city residents are needed for the account line item, 001-50-3745, other service in charge of the Crown Point Fire Rescue for the ongoing additional expenses to update and purchase of software for fire and rescue for the manner 2016. This is where we came back in front of you before, included the software change to adopt and receive those funds back in, that you guys adopted back in, I believe, the previous council meeting. This is for the additional appropriation to go in there, to transfer, and then was to pay for the software.
No, I believe we hit the Board of Works, but this is the first, this is the first council I've seen this.
Well, we, we brought this to the council's attention, that there was going to be some Medicare.
There, yeah, I think we brought it shortly at this, we sent it.
Yes, we would see this down the road. Yes, yeah, yes. So what we're asking for this one is the, read entitled only and hold over for second reading for this process, I'll just get here.
I move to read entitled only and hold over for second reading, ordinance 20160608.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, that'll be hold over for next meeting. And then, we're going to have to, I think, we're going to have to add this resolution, I do not have a resolution number on this one. This is for the uniforms, it's not on the general one. It's the authorization to transfer funds for the four firefighters. We, I know we have to add, can you create that resolution number for us?
Okay, sure.
Do we have a motion to add Resolution 20160613R? This is for a, fire chief has determined the necessary transfer fund within the series, the, they have fire, four firefighters, four firefighters, and require uniforms to transfer $1,725 from account 50-3100, professional services, to the account number of 50-4403. So you're going from the 3,000 series to the 4,000 series, which means a council approval. Do we have a motion to add to the agenda?
Some of them.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, now we can open up for...
Now you have a motion.
Yes, yes.
I move to approve resolution, sad resolution, because I don't remember the number.
20160613R. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Is there a reason that we didn't, if this came through somebody?
I don't know, this was...
Is there a timing issue? I, I didn't get it, so, you sent it on an email today?
I didn't get this either, and what could have happened was, was this on a PDF from Greg, and he sent it all at one time? Because the one I got on the one we just saw with the Medicare was on a PDF, so there could have been two attachments to it, and one was printed out.
See, now, my email says it's from you.
It came to me, I was copying on the original.
Oh, then he forwarded it out?
Yes, and I forwarded it, because I saw none of your names were on it, so I pushed it out when I saw it, but it was sent to Tim this morning. I happened to see it before I came today, so I pushed it out, but this, this is not we're not usually comfortable loading on things we've never seen before.
It's a live transfer.
Yeah, under the circumstances, it says, I think it's...
If it wasn't for the low amount, if for what it's for, I think we only hired four firefighters, I would ask to add this table, but since it's, we all, this body approved...
Maybe you could just pass that down to us, we can all look at it.
First I'm seeing two, so...
So, go hog it, we'll see it.
We can't have it without firefighters. But that, that process was a collision.
Oh, I know, yeah, I just talked about it.
That's why I saw the ordinance, not the resolution. Okay. All right, so, are we still in discussion? So we're still in discussion? We're still in discussion, so if there's any other discussion, all in favor, signify by an aye?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it, so we close that out, thank you. All right, now it's the discussion, establishment, and the re-establishment under the Q Development Fund, Q Capital Improvement Fund, and Q Fire Fund. Greg Garitas, who's waited patiently all night to have a highlight, this is like the prize fight of the evening, so, the main event is yours, sir.
Well, I'm not going to make it too dramatic.
Okay, that's good news.
But each and every year, the Q cap, the certain rates go down as a result of reassessment. Last year, we were not able to get all of our CC dollars, CCD dollars. State changed the rules of the ballgame, and now they're out from underneath the levy for CCD. So the good news is, what we're trying to do is re-establish the maximum tax rate on each of these, doesn't mean we'll go there, doesn't mean we'll be able to go there, but we can't go in... But we can't go anywhere from where we've been for the last so many years if we don't reenact this. Most cities, as a result of the reassessment, which is the AV goes up, the tax rate goes down. Every city, most cities do this each and every year, just to stay up with the automatic reduction that is a result of assessed value. So what this is trying to do is give us the ability, when we put together the 2017 budget, to have flexibility in these lines, and that's it.
To capture our current assessed value.
Right, capture our current dollars on our current assessed value.
Can you cite some examples real quick for the council, what these funds are used for?
Well, Q Capital Development is basically used for some of the police cars and things like that. It's used for capital items. CCI, that one is, is pretty much the ambulance, I believe. And then Q Fire, I mean, I can't say enough for what that's helping for.
Do we mind our sinking fund, our development fund also?
I'm sorry, I don't...
Do we, is our, is our Q Cap fund...
Our CCD?
A sinking fund?
Yeah, it accumulates, and if we don't spend it one year, it's available for the next year. But the key is, it's the, it's the fund that provides capital improvements.
So like the ladder trough that's being proposed out there, if we fire Q Fire could be reestablished, that could be a source of equipment like that when we plan for bigger, larger purchases.
Absolutely, that's how we view it.
Let the council know that's smart growth planning on dollars, sense of your AV. As AV grows, having that established rate makes a fund grow with it.
And again, it just establishes the max, and then we, through the budget process, whatever we advertise is what we will get.
Any questions? So, I mean, are you looking for, this is just an open discussion at this point? Are you looking for any action by the council to endorse this, or just say, as something coming here?
Yeah, what we're proposing is, is, you know, assuming that this is okay, then David Nichols will be putting together the ordinances to set that, because we're under a certain, we're under a certain timeline. Has to be done, I believe, for before August 1st.
And you're saying they simply set up every year?
No.
Or they go away?
What happens is, Laura, what happens is, if we set, if we, right now, our tax rate is 3.7%, let's say, or 3.7. And so what happens is, every year, there's a reassessment, the state adjusts the rate down, because they try and make the reassessment component of AV revenue neutral. Okay, so your tax rate just keeps creeping down, and it can never go up until you reestablish the max. So most cities and towns say, well, wait a minute, you know, we want to be able to have the, it's gone down each and every year, we want to state, we want five cents on all AV, so we should be able to get it. They make you go through the reestablishment process. It's kind of ridiculous.
So it's not that the fund went away, it's the rate that went away?
That's correct, it just keeps whittling down.
So that'll be coming to the council in the near future?
Yes.
I really want to make sure you guys are aware of that, so.
We wanted to give you a heads up.
Very, very good.
Are we going to be getting a packet or something on that, a little more info, a little more detail on the whole thing?
No, you'll get the ordinance, correct?
Okay.
Now that he knows that you've all kind of given head nod, that you're expecting this to come, go prepare the ordinance so you can have timely fashion to read. And we're going to get, so it'll be, we'll try to email to everyone. So it'll be, and then we'll drop the copy off at the council. Okay. Also, coming, it is, since we're, you're done with that part, right? We go to miscellaneous. Budget season is now upon everybody, and we're going to prepare for the budget. I know Christie's been doing a lot of awareness and education and schooling, be prepared for her first budget here, to work with the mayor's office. We'll be getting Form Ones out to our department heads, be preparing those things, and then working with our council through the season, and I believe you'll have a tentative schedule coming up, get to our target dates, because it's, you know, we'll do something like that as well. So that's, I understand, you know, we're in that season now, let's get past June, July, August, is a pretty busy month with probably some special meetings, so we hit the timely fashion for the county, and we get to approve the county, so we get our budget to the state. So, speaking of more numbers, I know Greg's not done, so you want to talk about, we got some good news about the refunding.
Yeah, and I had one of my staff members, Michael, here with me tonight, but we were here to, kind of, on April 4th, if everybody understands, that's 4/4, I came to you and we had, we asked you to suspend the rules on the bond ordinance to refinance the 2006 bonds. And at that point in time, I told you there were 4% interest rates, we were going to try and halve the interest rate to 2% and save approximately $161,000. Yesterday, we were able to lock that rate after a lot of effort over the last two weeks, and we did better than half the rate, we'll actually have an interest rate of 1.77% on it. And that meant the savings went all the way to $241,000. That's after cost, so all costs have been taken into account. So I met with the clerk treasurer's office, went through all the, all the gory details, right, Christie? Of every page in all the documents, and brought her, her office up to speed. And tomorrow, we'll be solidifying the final investment number, and then you'll be, you'll be, the mayor will be signing the documents, we're hoping to close on June 23rd. So turned out to be real, real good news, despite the market going up and down and all around over the last couple of weeks. That's where I wanted to see it, so that's, that's it.
Very good, Greg, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go right direct, just to kind of give you skinny on the upcoming events for the council.
A lot going on this month. First of all, the continuation of the road resurfacing project on Main Street between Clark and Summit will take place beginning tomorrow at 9:00 p.m. through 5:00 a.m. And will last approximately two weeks or so. A park room is taken place on Thursdays downtown from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The weekly farmers market is 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And we had our first one this past Saturday, it was very successful. This week, we will be moving to the municipal lot next to the post office, to make room for the corn roast, that is also taking place this weekend, Friday and Saturday. Friday from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m., Saturday from 12:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The Dolly Parade, also hosted by the Chamber, will take place on Saturday at noon. And the Household Hazardous Waste Recycling Event is Saturday, June 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Lake County Fairgrounds. AARP is hosting a free shredding event Saturday, June 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the Lake County Government Center. And then the Chamber is also hosting their Human Arts Festival next weekend, June 17th and 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And then Saturday, June 18th, the Volunteer Fire Pancake Breakfast, from 7:30 a.m., or 7:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. We're also getting ready for the Citywide Picnic on July 4th.
And they also, Volunteer Fire have their golf party on this Saturday as well. Lot going on, and there's all the other stuff that's going on with the construction as well, besides in that finally getting back to finish in Main Street, which will go all the way to Clark Street right here, the mindset around the square, they're just doing up to that point. And again, Court Street and North Street is now open. The only remaining is the final striping of the lane, the lane is down there, but we've already seen a marked improvement to the vehicles going eastbound, that left turn lane, which is going around, not backing up traffic and stuff like that. But there'll be a lot of other areas of construction going on, road improvements, so.
The markings on North Street aren't going to be done by the state?
On North Street?
Yeah. North and Main are... They were 12 feet less to that intersection. So they're actually going to put the striping, and one of them has to be there.
Even more good news. So, and then, you know, as we also, just the council, we saw the improvements on North Main Streets. We battled for the frontage road on 90, north of 97th Avenue over there, north to the One Professional Building, because the GIS says, shows that it's theirs. They're showing title work, and it's not theirs. So unless we can convince them that it is, that'll be our responsibility. They did take responsibility in doing the service frontage road from Summit Street all the way to Lewis Street. So that did get repaved as well, which is much, much needed if you travel through those corridors, the Napa, Hurricane, and this whole different area, into Walgreens area, so that was, that was done. So they're doing their part. They also are improving the civilization at Summit Street and Main Street. There's new poles going up, new string lights going across there, so that'll be an improvement in sections as well. And next year, you'll see the improvement at Indiana Avenue and 231, with new civilization at that location. And we're still battling with them to get the dedicated left turn signal at that for the southbound traffic that goes into East. So, so all four directions will have a dedicated line at that location as well. And the new traffic studies that come out for the improved intersection at North Street, Main Street, may help us to get an improved signal there as well, with dedicated left turn signals, lights at that location as well. Now that everyone who avoided that section, or couldn't get enough cars to go through because it was blocked, maybe the worst may go through now, so that's all good stuff. Any other business that you come from the council today?
I have one miscellaneous. I know we haven't been here long enough. You know, we've talked about the building standards advisory ad hoc committee, and so we keep, this thing kind of keeps getting put off and put off and put off. But if we're going to go through, suggestion the mayor, Meg, with, you know, two people from council, one from plan, one from VZA, I think the email is sent out to everybody on this. Is everybody, everybody's aware of what we're talking about? Yes, yes?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's going to come out of a vote at every meeting, correct? A nomination vote at every meeting?
Yes.
So do we want to tackle that tonight, or?
Well, I mean, I haven't heard a lot of, a whole lot of dialogue back from the council on that. You know, when that was brought up, and Chad brought that up, to have something that was going to be done with the Williamsburg corridor, then of course we got the North Street corridor, we got the Main Street corridor. I guess at the blank commission, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, representation, who's going to be there. And I know, and I appreciate Chris's comments, that we didn't want to, you know, red tape this committee. But I think it's a position on there where, to me, it would give representation of all the boards who make those decisions, and have some skin in the game on there, and then let the community still be actively involved, with the architects, the business owners, and things of that nature, to see some type of corridor rehab or direction, because the dialogue we have on Broadway, and it's been very passionate, very spirited, which is good. But I think the document is well, fully short, the expectation that confuses a lot of people what they expected out there. And we did present that document about the Williamsburg that actually is being done in Williamsburg, Virginia, which is a pretty nice document itself, but I'm open to hear suggestions or conversations about that. I don't know if we have time to dive into it, or we're going to have several meetings over the next two months because of budget, that maybe that can be brought up, so, but we need...
I just wanted to get the conversation back out again, you know, we brought up several months ago, and it's things kind of, kind of like Chris said, it's sort of taken a different turn than the original path, I think. But, I mean, like I responded, if that's the path that makes everyone comfortable, I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of passion when it comes to doing this stuff, and if that's what everyone's comfortable with, I mean, I'm okay, but we kind of need to make a decision on what we're going with.
So we could just tackle that and wait for more interaction on some emails?
Sounds good.
Is that good? You feel that chat, or?
Yeah.
Okay, any other business? Greg, any staff?
No.
Good answer. Anybody else got any, if not, entertain a motion for a German? All in favor of the aye?
Aye.
Yes?
Tendrils.
Everybody.
Everybody. Thank you.